Please stand to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Kennedy?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Ms. Dougherty?
Here.
Mr. Gendron? Mr. Gignac?
Here.
Mr. Hoey?
Here.
Six present, one absent.
So the first order of business is the public hearing for the purpose of discussing the transformation of the Lowell High School Career Academy into an invocation school. And we'll open up the hearing for those who wish to speak in favor.
Hi, I'm Margaret Erick. I'm the Director of Alternative Ed. And I'd like to do a very brief presentation, if that's okay. I feel I've taken much of the committee's time this year around the innovation initiative, so I'm going to keep this brief and celebratory. It should go without saying how thankful I am for the willingness of the superintendent to take a leap of faith, not only to encourage this work, but also for being a kindred spirit around the students in alternative education. Janine Durkin's leadership has been paramount for building the solid foundation in the alternative education redesign during the past three years. I want to thank her for always keeping the students' needs at the forefront during this process and for sharing the weight when the struggles became heavy. Although early on I was told that Paul Georges and the UTL would never agree to an innovation school in Lowell, it turns out that he, in fact, did. Thank you, Paul, for being open-minded, flexible, and to guide me through the planning. And most importantly, making sure that staff's best interests were being considered and for your desire to develop a program that is best for kids. So, thank you. So what are we doing? So, in the start of the 2016-2017 school year, the Lowell High School Career Academy will become a separate school from Lowell High School. Through the innovation status and by being operationally separate from Lowell High School, we are able to create policies and programming for the students who struggle in traditional comprehensive high schools. We are able to do this by honoring the high academic standards expected for all students in Lowell, but deliver the content differently. Why are we doing this? We're doing this to continue to build on Lowell Public Schools' objective of success for all students. We're going to expand on the great programming which has already begun at the Career Academy. We're going to strengthen the exciting, multi-faceted curriculum. And very importantly, we're going to gain the ability to access specific grant monies and fundraising through nonprofit status. What's it going to look like? The school hours are going to change. They're going to go from 7:40 until 5:00. Students are going to be able to create a flexible schedule to meet their needs as many students are working full-time to support their families and many are parents themselves. Student schedules can be diverse in learning opportunities, from classroom setting to experiences and real-life credit-earning options. We're going to continue to meet the need of the whole student, including focusing on their physical health, their mental health, and helping them prepare for college and career. And lastly, I would like to thank each member of the planning team for their dedication, their time and passion for the students in alternative education. They showed an unwavering willingness to conquer each barrier and remain steadfast in the goal. Without their insight, questioning, challenging, and openness, this plan would not have come to fruition. So, thank you all very much. And at this point, there's some people that want to come and speak. And if there's any questions, maybe I could take the questions after. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jen Hartigan. I'm a little nervous, so you'll have to pardon me. I'm used to speaking in front of 15-year-olds. I've been with the alternative high school since its inception in 1999. So I've seen it go through a lot of different phases and a lot of changes over the time, even building moves, all sorts of things. And I just wanted to say to you that looking, working on this innovation program and the changes that I've seen this last year have been amazing. We're starting to really be able to help our kids, meet them where they're at, do things that will build bridges over the roadblocks that they face in their lives. One of the things that I just wanted to speak quickly to is the wraparound services. Would be in the past that a kid might need glasses in the classroom. You call the parents, you try to get something done. It might take a month. And meanwhile, they've lost a month of learning because they can't access anything that you're doing in the classroom. This year, twice, a bus pulled up and kids were called down and they got their glasses immediately from the vision van. Those types of things, meeting kids where they're at is why I support the innovation process. Thank you.
Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor?
Hi, I'm Megan Alachlan. I'm the coordinator of the Career Academy. Over the last year or so, we've been able to offer a sampling of what an innovation status would provide for our students. And throughout the sampling of programs we've offered, such as project-based learning, like Jen spoke about the wraparound services, we've seen increased student engagement. And one of the biggest things, I think, that speaks to that is, at the end of semesters, we review students' progress and we get to see how well they've done. And we get to offer them an opportunity to rejoin Lowell High School. And this year, we had quite a few students who had met the requirements to do so. And the majority of all the students asked if they could stay at the Career Academy. And we had parents calling and asking if they could stay because they've been able to recognize that the services that we're being offering and we're going to continue to offer are working for those students who haven't been successful elsewhere. Thank you.
Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor?
I am Brian Martin, the headmaster, and I'm not nervous, but my ear hurts. I just wanted to speak in favor of the proposal. I believe, after three years working with the staff of Mr. Durkin, Margo Ferick, and all of the folks involved at the Career Academy, it's time to give them a chance. We accept every student that walks to the door in Lowell. And we do everything we can to keep them in school, to help them graduate, to help them be prepared for college or a career. And I think this opportunity will enhance that for all of our students. And our support is unanimous from the high school, and Dr. Howe and Dave Robinson from Student Support Services sat on the committee. And we're excited to continue the partnership. We worked hard to, with the engagement center at the school, where a lot of our students go up and make up work. On occasion, the student has to be assigned to the school, but in many cases, we bring them right back. So it's a terrific partnership, and I'd like to see them have an opportunity to be more successful in the next years to come. Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor?
Yes, I support this. And so does the UTL. But, and Margo was correct. Ordinarily, I perhaps, I've always been open to the possibility as long as people were protected and the interest of the teachers was always taken into consideration. But there's other reasons. I think there's something, ordinarily, I would have just said, look for a waiver on the time because that's the primary difference that would impact us. However, there are some advantages of the designation as an innovation school. Now that school is directly, or the superintendent oversees that school directly, and ultimately, the school committee does. That's advantageous in a number of different ways because the taxpayer dollars are going into that school. And unlike a charter school where there is no accountability, directly going back to the taxpayer, in this case, it's still under your purview and the superintendent of schools. Also, there was a lot of creativity, I thought, utilized in creating this new vision for this school with some flexibilities that would be advantageous particularly to that population as being served at the school. And lastly, I'd just like to say, congratulate the staff, and particularly the teachers and paraprofessionals that worked tirelessly this year, to put the plan together and a very thoughtful plan that takes into consideration the needs of those students who are difficult to educate, but they seem, the staff that I've met with through this whole process is totally dedicated to make sure those children come up with an effective and quality education. So, with that said, I certainly support the proposal to become innovative status. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor? In favor, in favor, in favor. Hearing none. Close the hearing on behalf of the proponents and open it up for those who wish to speak in opposition. Is there anybody who wishes to speak in opposition? In opposition? Opposition, opposition, hearing none. Close the hearing. For those who wish to speak in opposition, open up to the committee. We also have item 22, which is a report from the superintendent that will, if there's no objection, we'll take that up at the same time and has to do with the same subject matter. Ms. Martin?
I would make a motion to take item number 22, the proposed Career Academy Innovation Plan, up at this time.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Hoey. Discussion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. And now, do we have a motion to approve? Motion approved by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Gignac. Discussion on the motion. Ms. Martin?
I'll try to be brief as well. I do think that this represents a real win for our district. This is a really, I guess, pardon the pun, innovative approach to working with students who we haven't been able to serve as effectively in traditional classrooms. So I think it speaks really incredibly well for the work that's happened, both from the administration side, right through all of the teachers and the other community partners who've been part of this. And I think it really gives us an opportunity to see how this new structure can work, and most importantly, how it can work for our kids. So I applaud all the many hours of work that went into this. And I'm looking forward to seeing some great results from this new opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Starting.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to start by saying I'm very excited about what this opportunity means for our kids. As someone who has been, you know, really watched the alternative school program evolve, I think we've come to a really exciting point where we can continue to see the impact on not only our dropout rate, our attendance, all those things that, you know, the metrics that we look at to show that we're moving forward. I do, however, have a concern, and I want to broach this question while we've got some of the key players in the room. In the report, it was mentioned that the Career Academy would need a guidance counselor dedicated to the school. And as we all know, we had a very tight budget season, and we did not add a guidance counselor. So I'd like to understand how we can move forward with the innovative academy, what the plan is in place. Because I think in the language I read, it said something like, "until funding becomes available." So that, that's a little vague. And I'd like to know, just to make sure, because that is a requirement of being a standalone school, that they have those resources. What is the plan in place? And I don't know if the superintendent wants to start. I know the headmaster's also here. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You got it? Yeah, we are, we're aware of it. And I think Ms. Margo has already approached the state about that in their discussions. It is something that we are definitely working very hard to try to make it happen. In the meantime, the meantime, until funding is available, is definitely through the help of the high school. And Mr. Martin is aware of it. He's here. He can confirm that, that they will lend hand through the various counselors that they have, maybe sending them, you know, one period, you know, every now and then to help out. But the plan is to go very aggressively. Now that, after you vote today, if you vote in the affirmative, then we become officially an innovation school. We will have more venues for grants and opportunities that we can apply for. And this is, this is besides the current grants that we are very much looking at in trying to figure out some additional funding. And if we do find any kind of funding, we will come back and ask you to restore one of the positions, you know, go back, create that position of counselor so we can, we can have a full-time counselor there.
Just as a follow-up, could I ask the headmaster to explain how are they going to be providing those services until we get the funding? What the plan is for that? Because I know the guidance counselors are, they're pretty, they've got a pretty heavy student load as it is.
Through the mayor, we're going to do everything we can to make the program work. Right now, we don't have a staffer to simply assign there, but we do have staffers that have come in over a period of the year to fill in for guidance counselors, retirees. We just had someone fill in for three-quarters of the year, actually, for a guidance counselor who would easily be interested in going there. So I think it's a matter of being creative, looking at funding, looking at grants, looking at some part-time support from the high school to get the program going. And I'm confident everything will work out.
Anything else? Any further discussion? Mr. Hoey?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I just have a few things to say because 20 years ago, I voted against these alternative schools. I didn't believe in them. I thought anybody that's causing violence in the school should be sent home to their parents and let the, let the parents go to the courts and force the courts to have the school committee and the school system take the kids back. But I have to say this. The superintendent, when he just got here and I just met him, he wanted to fix these programs. The Cardinal O'Connor School, the Career Academy, to me, they, they were broke for a lot of years. The Bridge Program was a great program. I'm not going to say that was broke. It was a good program. But these other two, two schools, the Cardinal O'Connor and the Career Academy, what I've noticed over the years, there was no discipline. Just, they lacked, they got a little weak on the discipline. When a child gets sent from like the Sullivan School, a school that everybody always wants to talk about, they get sent from the Sullivan to, let's say, the Cardinal O'Connor School, for whatever reasons. And then, the Cardinal, they're ready to play basketball, the Sullivan School and all these other schools, they allow those children to go play basketball after they acted up in the school. So those are the type of things we have to look at. I'm going to support this school because the people and the players that have put this all together, I think we're finally getting something real good. So I will support it. But I think we have to look at discipline a little bit harder when it comes to those type of schools. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Roll call.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron? Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent. Approved.
Mr. Dakota?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move item 21 up to...
You want to take item 21 out of order?
Yes, please.
Okay. If there's no objection, we'll take item 21 out of order by... Okay. If there's no objection, we'll take item 21 out of order by, by general consent. And item 21 is a report from the superintendent regarding the online waitlist. Mr. Superintendent?
He did say 21.
You can go ahead.
Do we, do we want to wait?
May I?
Yeah, go ahead.
While we're on that, can we take number 18 out of order, so the lovely people from the Washington School can do their presentation and then take off?
No objection, we have consented. Take item 18 out of order. Item 18 is also a report from the superintendent, the Washington School.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent, Claire Abrams.
Thank you, Superintendent. So I'd like to welcome Cheryl Cunningham and her team from the Washington School tonight. What we've done over the course of this year, sorry, done over the course of this year, is really tried to highlight our schools. The Washington School is what lost highlight for this year, anyway. And we welcome them, they're a Level One school, they continue to be a Level One school. So welcome and enjoy.
Thank you. Cheryl Cunningham, as she said, from the Washington School. Thank you, Mayor Kennedy, School Committee, for this invitation, and thank you to my staff for their continued support. I'm going to tell you a little bit about the Washington School, we're one of the few small schools left. We service about 280 students in grades pre-K to four, and also have two CSA classrooms, children of students with autism. We feel what we lack, because we are a hundred-plus-year-old building, what we lack in amenities, we make up for in many other ways, and I'm hoping to highlight that for you tonight. So our motto is being the best that you can, we can be, and I think it's on our backs. And it's what drives us. So our goal is for every student, every staff member, every teacher to be the best that they can be. Okay. So when Claire asked me about this, she said, "Talk about what you are proud of." So one of the things that we are very proud of is, for the last four years, we have maintained a Level One status, it's up on the screen, for our MCAS results. And not only that, as you can see, from 2012 onward, we moved up in our percentile rank when compared with like schools. So something to be really proud about. On orientation day at the beginning of the year, with that new information in our presence, we decided to take a look at our school a little bit deeper, based on some work that we had done at leadership. And we looked at, who are we as a school? What makes us special? And what makes us successful? And our work was based on a TED video that we had seen. And it talked about how powerful our successful organizations run, and it said in it that most know what the what is. A hundred percent people know what the what is that they do. And some know the how, but few know the why. So that was our mission on that day, to look at the why. What, what is it that makes us successful? What is it that has made us successful for the past four years? And some of the results were that we, we asked each staff member to put their, their three things that they thought drive them, and that, what is their why? Why do they get out of bed in the morning? Why do they do this job? And some of the things that came up is that we are focused, that we, they feel respected, they believe that we can make a difference, that we care, we have a committed staff, and that we are child-centered. And in the video, they said that often, people work from the outside in, but the real successful organizations work from the outside, from the center out. And so that's why we kind of looked at that why piece. And in the next slide, it shows, we put all of those traits that the people had, our staff had come up with. And as you can see, difference, making a difference comes out really big. We got that response from a lot of our staff members, kids, because that is our focus. And also, purpose, and the love for what we do, and many other traits as well. So we decided, being asked to do this, that we would take a look again, now that it's the end of the year. And we, I asked staff for input in these areas, we're calling them the four Cs, commitment to excellence, our strong community, positive culture, and building character. We feel that those are four areas. They're hard to separate, because they often are interwoven. And I am going to turn it over to Kate Hugo, who is our literacy specialist, and she's going to do the commitment to excellence piece.
Hi. So when we were asked to come, the first thing that Cheryl did was, she sought out the staff, because it's always teamwork at the Washington, and she wanted some input from everybody. So when we put out the idea, we asked, what makes us committed to excellence? We know we come in every day, and we want our kids to be the best that they can be, and we want to be the best that we can be. So what are some things that we do for that? And when we started asking, we came up with excellent teacher attendance. So most days, most of our staff is there, unless they're pulled out for professional days, or here and there. But you'll see some people in there with tissues and cough and sneezing, because they know that, you know, substitutes are there to help, but nobody can really replace the teacher, they're so important in the classroom. All of our staff is committed to ongoing professional development. So our staff seeks out coaches, both literacy and math, and then they also seek out things outside of the school. Many are involved in trying to learn more strategies for our ELL learners, or to brush up on some new math that's out there, some new writing. But they're always looking forward to learning more, and to bring it back into the classroom. We all have high expectations for learning and behavior, I know behavior came up earlier, too, and that's something that we work really hard at, because we want to make sure that our children are prepared for the future, both in learning, and also in how to be good citizens. We know our students well, I think that really helps that we're a small school, it's kind of like chairs, everybody kind of knows each other. But we also really look at data, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. Another way that we have risen to excellence is through some effective instruction. Our teachers plan together, and they look at data, and they make sure that they don't waste any minutes in the classroom. And part of that is our collaborative spirit. We're always willing to seek each other out, I have this problem, can you help me out? And just putting some heads together to try and figure it out. So something that we have found to be successful is, if we're all working on a common goal, it's helpful to have friends who are in the same position, and who can bring some insight. So when we think about our school-wide goals, we pull all our data, we actually start right after school ends, we look at all the end-of-the-year data, and we really think methodically about, hmm, we don't just want it to be for a school year, because we know by the time we get in, and we get settled, and October comes, the end of the year comes pretty fast. So we've decided to take two years, or three years even sometimes, so that we can really dig deeper into the content, and into the goal that we're focused on. So in reading and writing, when the new units slash modules came out, we really hit the ground running, and we tried to get everybody up to speed. But now, we're really spending some time just getting better at what we do, taking some time to, wow, we've got this under control, but now we need to make it better. With our professional practice goal, we decided that as teachers, we're really good talkers, but we really want our students to get in there and teach each other, and to be more accountable. So that's been our focus, which also goes into math. Our kids are great at calculating, but we want them to be better problem solvers, and part of that comes through actually talking to each other, and working through problems together, and also blending in our new math. So that's been our school-wide goal for this year, and it will continue into next year. So as I mentioned before, we know our students, and part of how we know them, we know them as kids, and the great kids that they are, but we also know their numbers. So we sit together at data summits at the beginning of the year, and we also meet regularly throughout the school year, when some new data comes in. We're always looking at the big assessments, but then we're also looking at the day-to-day, when we sit down with kiddos and see, hmm, how did you plan this problem? Or what are you writing about today? And we take some notes, and make sure that we plan our lessons based off of that. And all our instructional groupings, we really want to make sure the kids don't get stuck in the same group. Today, maybe you got this, and your buddy didn't, so I need tomorrow to make sure that I switch that group up, so that you can move on to what you really need, and somebody who might need a little more intervention gets another hit of it. And as teachers, we know our students, but we're big believers in the fact that we want kiddos to know where they are, in both reading, math, and writing, because in order to be the best that you can be, you need to know where you are, and where you need to go. So we have started personal best binders, and our students are very proud of these binders, because it holds all of their data, and their hard work that gets sent home to parents. So in these binders, they keep track of their data. We've taught kids what standards are, in a kid-friendly way, and we make sure that they know that they're always trying to be the best they can be, not be what the person next to you is, but that you have some goals, and we're going to help you get there, but we want you to know where you should be, and how we can work hard to get there. And our kids are very proud of themselves when they achieve their goals, or they make some progress towards their goals, it's really great to see. And in these binders, we also teach kids how to be successful, and that one way to be successful is to set some goals. And kids don't come naturally knowing this. So we spend some time really looking at what good readers do, and good mathematicians do, and good writers do, and we really work on, hmm, what could you do to be better, and how can we all help you? And we make sure they write it down, because sometimes, when it's written, it helps to remind you and stick to it.
Okay.
All right.
Switching it back. We'll try to move it along, because I know you have a long, long agenda. Positive culture. Our staff feels that we have a positive culture that fosters staff and student learning. It's grounded in the belief, once again, that we can make a difference. And we're continually working on building relationships between staff, students, and families. It's ongoing, your work is never done. And together, we share a common vision, we work together towards a common goal, and we try to make all members feel that they are contributing members, and they're here today contributing, they, they contributed in so many ways already. Once again, collaborative, and that's ongoing as well. That, the culture is that thread that kind of weaves through everything that you do, and is so critical. We do have a strong community, and we believe that together, everyone accomplishes more. And our parents here are key. And we don't have an organized PTO, but when we need help, we get help, whether it's for box tops, or our Christmas mall, or this year, we, I made it my own professional practice goal, to try and do a little more around getting parents in and involved in different ways. They've come to the performances, they've come to the activity nights, but how do we get them a little more involved in, in planning, and also in the, on the academic side of things? So we started off the year really gung ho. We had planning committees for our Jog-a-thon, parents involved, and we also had, had our parents pretty much, we were almost done with Scary Story Night, we had been saturated by it, but they wanted it, and so they stepped up, planned it, implemented it, and it went off. And of course, it's always a huge success. They're saying, why would you cancel this when it's a huge success? Because it takes so much to get it off the ground. So I just want to give you two quick examples about community. Last Friday, we had our field day, and it was a beautiful day. But that in and of itself doesn't guarantee it's going to go well. Mr. Z, our awesome gym teacher, planned some wonderful activities, but it took more than that. He set up all the stations, we have to have our parents. Our parents came and supported all of the activities that happened that day. We, our staff, it's off-schedule, they have to get the kids going all around to the stations, it's a wonderful day, but it's, it's a different kind of day. Food service supported our cookout, our custodians supported cooking for our cookout. Everybody, parents helped with a school-wide recess, so that the teachers could go eat. So that's what a real community looks like in our, in our eyes. And another example is our peace garden, something that's been a three-year initiative at the school. Lots of pieces coming together to make this happen. And it's under construction, but our goal was to have a peaceful place for students to go, that looks nice, and that reminds them about some of the work that we do, especially around building character. So we wrote a Lowes Two Box Grant, that provided us with $2,500, and we're buying three additional benches, we bought plants for the garden, and I'll show you in another slide, another project that we're doing. And to make that happen, these are some of our school leaders, this is our school beautification team out there doing the actual labor. So students are involved in our community efforts as well. And then every classroom is in the process of creating a stepping stone that exemplifies one of the character traits that we've worked on, and there are two examples, but they're coming out awesome. And those are going to provide a walkway in front of our, our garden. So we're hoping probably by the beginning of the school year, this will all be set. The school beautification team is also in the process of making signs that will remind about being respectful, and responsible, and all of that. So that's an example of, and also, the Middle Miss Foundation gifted us with a buddy bench, that was our first bench. The kids got involved in this, and originally, I had a vision of black benches to match the black fence, matchy-matchy. But a student at recess said to me, well, maybe we should have different colors. So the next thing you know, we had a school-wide vote, different colors won. So we will have a red, a blue, a green, and a purple. Let's see. And to make that happen, just before we go ahead, the city workers, talk about community, they're helping with the cement footings, those are supposed to go in, hopefully, tomorrow for the new ones, but they also did the old ones. We had some support with planting grass, we have planted many, many new trees with the Lowell Parks and Conservation. So it is indeed a hu, huge community effort. Oh, and really important, those trees would be dead if our neighbors across the street didn't water them all last summer. So kudos to them. And the last thing that we're really proud of is that we really do try to build character. And our goal is to make very abstract concepts concrete. So it kind of permeates all that we do. Every student I work with, I use the language, it's common language for our staff. And right now, we are using, we focus on one trait a month, and we are using materials from Core Essentials, which is new to us this year, because it provides a visual. And they try to make sure that students can say the trait, see it visibly around, to know it, and also to be it, to really live it. We start with our big three, being safe, respectful, and responsible. Like I said, provides common language, and kids know the drill. When something happens, I say, was that being responsible? Mm-mm. So it permeates all that we do. And actually, the last thing, one of the other things that we're really proud about is that, as part of this, we try to give leadership opportunities for our students. And this is really done pretty much on a volunteer basis. Go to the next one. We have four leadership groups in our fourth grade, and Mrs. Chan, the para in that picture, runs that group, and she does it, kids give up their recess, and they have lunch together as they plan. And they have done things like pennies for patients, Helping Hands, they collected things for the homeless, they've supported Game Day during Spirit Week this week, and more importantly, they lead by example. We also have a recycle team that, you know what they do, they recycle every week, they do a lot of the heavy work, but they also created a video this year to teach the other students about the importance of recycling. And for their efforts, they were given a free concert today by the DESC Green Team, the state Green Team. And we were, we used Lowell Catholics Gym, so that we could have our whole school go there. Once again, community all around. So our Cato Four students could all partake in it. We also have a photography team, led by Mrs. McPhail. Once again, kids give up their recess and lunch, and they... Once again, kids give up their recess and lunch, and they take a lot of the pictures that we use every day. And our last one, our beautification team, that has done things like plan a school-wide cleanup. They've done the planting. You saw them doing the cleanup work and planting as well. And I want to end on what I think is a really positive note. One of our parents, Christine Hoffman, told us a really good story. And this is what makes you know that what you're doing matters and does make a difference. So I'd like her to share it with you.
My name is Christine Hoffman. I'm a paraprofessional in one of the classrooms for students with autism. I work with a fourth grader who spends most of the day in inclusion. However, he does spend recess with the CSA classrooms. I'd like to share a story on how the Washington School of Fourth Graders made a fourth-grade CSA student feel very special. The fourth graders earned an extra recess and were playing kickball. The CSA student decided he wanted to join the kickball game. I was a bit concerned because of the student's social awkwardness, so I asked for volunteers to help the student run the bases. And many of the hands went up. First time up, second time up, he was accompanied by another student. But by the third time up, he said, I want to do it by myself. All the kids cheered him on and pretended that they couldn't get him out. And on the last time up, all the students cheered him on to a home run. I can't tell you how choked up I got and how impressed I was with the fourth graders at the Washington School. They made the student, the CSA student, the happiest kid ever. And it made me actually cry happy tears. And I honestly tell you, I can't speak for the character of the students at the Washington School.
So our efforts do pay off. Hard work does pay off right. It's a good place to learn and to be. So I thank you for this opportunity to share the work that we do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just want to offer my thanks to Principal Cunningham and your team. There could not be a better response to my motion. So I really appreciate what you do every day and that you took the time tonight to come and talk to us about it. Of everything you've shared with us, all of which is incredibly impressive, the character education is something that I just think is so critically important. And to see it being made manifest in your school and being able to talk about a real-life story of where your kids really demonstrated it, that's, in addition to being touching, it's really incredibly inspiring. So I thank all of you for the work you do every day. I know your students and your parents feel the same way. But from the committee, to have an opportunity to talk about the good stuff, they're few and far between. So I thank you for sharing that with us.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Further discussion?
Just something quick. In noticing the picture that you had of your leadership team, you couldn't help but see the pride in their faces in that photo. It was awesome to see. Thank you so much.
Thank you. My staff.
Any further discussion? Chairwoman, ten motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. Doherty, second by Mr. Hoi. Discussion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item in business is the approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled school committee meeting of Wednesday, June 1st, 2016. Do we have motion to accept the minutes? By Mr. Doherty, second by Mr. Decodo. Discussion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted. Next, under permission to enter, is a contract ratification for SEIU 888, the clerks. Do we have a motion to approve? We have a motion to approve by Mr. Gignac, second by Mr. Hoi. Discussion on the motion? Roll call.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Decodo?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
Next, we have several items under permission to enter. Do we have a motion to approve the items? By Mr. Decodo, second by Mr. Gignac. Discussion, roll call. Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mr. Decodo?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Six shades, approved.
Next, under memorials, we have a memorial for James Concindein, retired Lowell High School housemaster and husband of former Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services Rosemary LeBlanc Concindein, and father of Butler School teacher Kristen Weingold. Do we have a motion to approve the transfer request? Superintendent, go ahead, Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I can give a brief overview of the transfer request and to go over, there's actually three transfer requests. The first one is...was in the board packets that you received on Monday. The other transfer request, two and three, is at your table, and I'll explain that in a minute or two. At the last committee meeting, three transfer requests were approved by the committee. Tonight, we are asking the committee to approve revisions to these three transfer requests that were previously approved. On Friday, a memorandum illustrating revisions to transfers request two and three were listed on the web. On Monday, a memorandum illustrating revisions to transfer request one was provided. Unfortunately, the transfer request one replaced two and three was meant to add as an additional transfer request, so not to replace transfer request two and three, which is at your table today. And I'll go through the different transfer requests. The purpose of the transfer number one is to transfer enough allocations to employee salary accounts to pay the remaining payroll cost. Retro payments were made on June 2nd after the last committee meeting, so we are now able to project the remaining payroll cost. We compare these costs to the remaining budget available to determine if we needed to transfer more dollars into the budget. There are remaining dollars, after all, left that we are now recommending to allocate to technology and some furniture for the new classrooms at the STEM Academy and the Wang Middle School. Now, transfer request number two, which is at your table, revises the custodial reimbursement by approximately $90,000. We refined our calculations on the custodial reimbursement and added up the hours spent man by man, person by person, on the food service cleaning and supervision by the custodians and made that revision. The third transfer request, we receive new information from DESI regarding the monies to be carried over from the circuit breaker account. The law provides only the ability to carry over one year of revenues to the next year. Therefore, we will use the circuit breaker monies to pay the special education tuition cost until we hit that one-year carryover limitation. This means, bottom line, that we can reallocate monies for other purposes. We are recommending that we spend these additional dollars on technology to purchase additional Apple laptop carts for each grade level, since the schools have a great need for more laptops. I'll stop there and apologize for the mishap on the document not being on the web. But these transfer requests allows us to utilize the monies for the best use. And under state law, any available budget left after all the expenditures are incurred and encumbrances are processed by June 30th are considered free cash and can be reverted to the city's budget. So it's in the best interest to be able to utilize these dollars and spend them for good purposes. So I leave it at that and entertain any questions that you may have. And Superintendent and I will be happy to answer your questions.
Do we have a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Mr. Gignac, second by Mr. Hoi. Discussion, Mr. Gignac, then Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On transfer request number one, you had just indicated that you're going to be using these funds, other than the salary accounts and the special education transportation, to outfit the additional classrooms at the Wang and the Rogers?
The furniture for the Wang and the...
As well as the computer software?
The computer would be district-wide. They'll allow us to provide one additional Apple cart per grade level, district-wide.
Okay. That...just on transfer request one?
Yes.
Seven...so what is the $9 million on the other page?
You mean $900,000?
$900,000.
Yeah. I wish it was $9 million. That would provide an additional Apple laptop cart. So it would be two per school.
Two total.
I mean, two per grade level, per school.
Per grade level, per school. Okay. My question regarding transfer request one was I recall in the budget deliberation specifically asking if the budget document provided enough funds for those classrooms to retrofit them with furniture and technology. And I remember the response was a, yeah, absolutely. And now it looks like we're, you know, using funds to do that. So I'm a little concerned about that. But I understand that, you know, we need to spend the money or else it becomes free cash and the city can do with it what it wishes. But regarding the special education tuition on transfer request number three?
Yes.
This seems to be the third time that special education tuition number has gone up, third or fourth time, over the past few months, as far as what you're projecting it to be next year. And I do recall asking that question numerous times throughout the budget, if that number is going to suffice. And now it looks like for the third time, we're increasing that.
No, we're not actually increasing. We're just, instead of using the...now we're using the circuit breaker.
Now you're using...
As opposed to just using the...
The general fund.
The general fund, yes. So we're going to take the monies from the...the same amount of monies from the circuit breaker, transfer it to the local fund.
Okay. It's just not clear with that transfer request because it's not physically coming from the circuit breaker. You know what I'm saying?
Right. This, instead of increasing the budget allocation for the tuition...
You're taking it from there, okay.
We're not increasing the allocation. We're just, instead of increasing it, we're increasing the technology budget.
Okay. Okay, I understand.
So the dollars remain the same.
And my last, my final question regarding this, the technology improvements, I think it's great that you're bringing this forward, and I think it's long overdue that we continue to invest in technology. My main concern is whether or not investing, you know, this much money at once is the smart thing to do in regards to staff and whether our tech department is able to manage this and whether or not, I remember I was on the committee a few years ago when we implemented these technology improvements. There's a lot of pushback on how comfortable schools were in taking in and accepting that technology. I know we're in a better place now, but I don't want to buy, you know, over a million dollars' worth of technology to sit in a closet because, Ms. Martin recalls, that did happen in some of the schools because they simply weren't ready for it. And I don't want to see that happening. Is that a concern of yours? Mr. Superintendent?
Let me answer that one. First of all, this proposal comes from the technology department. So I'm going to have to assume that when the director of technology submitted this request, I think he has had, looked at his staff capacity and also the request of the principals and all the requests. I believe we are in a place now where they're becoming much ready in using the technology. There's also some parts of this is as well, the continuation of, I think it's in the, perhaps in Bundal or in the software piece, there is a continuation of iReady too. In the past, they had, when they got iReady with that grant, it was only guaranteed for two years for fifth grades. And there was no provision for elementary school. So last year, we were able to get elementary going. And he wants to continue on doing, continue with iReady because it seems like a lot of the principals like to have these kind of tools, and it's helping them. So they want to continue with that as well, which means that not only you need the, he needs the funding for the software, for the licenses, but he also needs funding for more hardware to support deployment of iReady. So I think that coming, a report coming from the technology department, that's the first thing they had to look at, is will they be able to support and deploy? You know, and I think with all the PD that they've done last year, this year, I think they're in a very good place with that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. One would be, you know, as we move forward with transfer requests, it's difficult to kind of...it's difficult to see the progression with the way these are being presented. It would be great to see what we start with, then see what the transfer request is, then see what the final...I mean, if we could see, I think that information would make it much easier. I mean, I know we had a...we had a conversation about the circuit breaker account at our last meeting.
Right.
So it seems like that's the direction we've gone in, and that's great, to spend down that money specific to special ed requests, or needs, I should say. But if we could see the kind of progression as things go, it would be a much more informative kind of thing. I understand the technology problems that, you know, this just came tonight. I mean, that's fine, I understand.
Be happy to alter that to fit your request.
That would be great. I know we have this free cash situation where, you know, spending that doesn't happen before June 30th does revert to the city's free cash account. I know in the past, and I don't mean to wax philosophic or nostalgic maybe, but we have been able to work with the city to ensure that monies that were saved within one fiscal year could be put into the suspense account and kind of, I don't want to say held harmless, but we're able to bring forward into the next year. It requires, you know, conversation. It requires a commitment. And perhaps it requires some trust. But we've certainly been able to accomplish that in the past. And, you know, looking at these expenditures, we can, you know, I recognize what they're going towards. But we could have the opportunity where we're looking at next year, a very difficult year, that this could be one of the ways that we may be able to take some of the pressure off, not in a huge way. I mean, we're not talking millions and millions of dollars. But it could be a good faith effort on our part to try and get some of these monies to be able to kind of be held in abeyance over the changeover to the next fiscal year, allow them to stay in the suspense account so that in the next fiscal year, we'd have the opportunity to spend them. It's a little, I guess, late as we talk about transfers at this point, but as we move forward, it may be something to keep in mind.
I'd like to...I totally understand what you're saying. I just want a quick alternate view. And the alternate view is there are some expenditures that are one-time expenditures and some that are ongoing. And the danger in carrying over money for ongoing expenditures is you may have the money for that one year, but not for the succeeding years. If you carry, if you're allowed to carry over money and use it for one-time expenditures, that's a different story and concur with you. that's a different story and concur with you. But the danger would be if it's for ongoing expenditures such as salaries, so I just wanted to add that perspective.
And I completely agree. I mean, the differentiation between operational expenses and one-time expenses is something that we've, we've dealt with a lot, absolutely. You know, and again, just last year, we made that decision that we, we had rolled money over so that we could use it for operational expenses, we wanted to give a new superintendent an opportunity to kind of live through a year before we were facing these kind of cuts. A year later, we're facing these kind of cuts, we have a very difficult budget for the next year. So, I mean, there is certainly a, there's an argument to be made to, you know, for first, for one-time expenses, like technology, those types of things. But, you know, again, we're going to be in a very tight budget year next year, you know, it's a, it's an opportunity in some cases to be able to give ourselves a little bit of breathing room as we, as we move forward into...
Thank you. Any further discussion? The motion is to approve the transfer, roll call.
All three?
Yeah.
All three.
Is it, well, let me ask the maker of the motion, is that...
Correct, all three.
Yeah.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DiCotto?
Yes.
Ms. Arity?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
Next item on unfinished business is the cost of educating, educating children out of district. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and again, I will ask Mr. Frisch to present that, the cost of educating children from out of district.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. I spent a lot of time tabulating the cost on this. The costs presented are in aggregate to maintain confidentiality of students. So in total, it's 129,610 for the 36 students. I will like to make, emphasize one important fact, that these costs are for 2015, 16, and the costs will change year by year as the makeup of the students change year by year. The 36, even if the 36 cohort of students remain the same, there's different costs for different grade levels. And students throughout their school years have different needs, and those costs can change. So I wanted to emphasize the fact that this is, this cost estimate, I feel confident on for the 2015, 16 school year. These costs will change for 2016, 17, up or down. And that's what I wanted to just articulate to you. So without further ado, I will, Superintendent and myself, be happy to answer any questions along with assistant superintendents to my right.
Any discussion? I just have one question. The, I thought that the, the request for the information had to do with the upcoming school year. I mean, the school year is almost done, and so why would, why would the amount that it would cost for this year be important as compared to next year? Mr. Superintendent?
If I may say, Mr. Mayor, the cost will be slightly up or down, given that all the makeup of the student remains the same. We don't see much difference because these costs was, when we, when we, prior, when we were talking in general about the cost of a child, we took the average, we took whatever we get from chapter 70 divided by the number of students, and, you know, we went on and did the average. This cost, I believe, was built on the actual categories because the cost of elementary is different from middle, different from, different as well from, from higher, and of course, you have different sped costs. So these costs are built on the same students based on the numbers that we have. I think the, we, we should expect that these costs remain fairly flat, given that all the students remain the same, there isn't really much of a difference. However, the, you know, I say that with the, making sure that we're fully transparent that anyone, anyone of these 36 children could, could end up in a situation requiring an IEP that may move them out of district or move them into higher needs. So that's, that's something that can happen to any district, any student in any district, any school. So that also could be playing a major, major factor in the change.
Just as a point of information, if I could follow up, so we just finished the budget for, for the 16, 17 school year. And therefore, to me, you should be able to make a projection of what those costs will be. So are you implying that the costs will be roughly the same as they were for this year?
I believe that...
As you know with the information...
I believe they'll be roughly the same. It's the, the makeup, as say, a fourth grader is moving to a fifth grader, if we are to take the actual cost of elementary student versus middle school students, will be slightly different, and those costs are not known yet, until we, the year-end reports where you get, it's always one year back. We know, we will know the, the exact cost toward the end of next year, what will be the difference between the two exactly. But then, we should expect them to be fairly flat.
Okay. Chair, entertain a motion accepted as, as a report of progress by Ms. Arity, seconded by Mr. DiCotto. Any further discussion? Ms. Arity?
I think, Your Honor, I think it was important to get this number, you know, this number in the aggregate. I know it's not perfect, but to me, it's not really about the number, it's about how we're going to move forward with something that's been going on for decades and come up with a policy that's going to, first of all, you know, obey the state law, that Lowell residents get first precedence, but also out of respect for the, the children that are in our schools and the families of our staff. So, I mean, I think it was worthwhile, I know there were people on the council who wanted to get an idea of this number, and I know this committee is committed to coming up with a fair policy going forward that is going to put our residents first. So that's just the way I'm looking at it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Hoi?
Real quick, we had a lot of struggles in that policy subcommittee, and I'm glad you took hold of things to help it out. The only concern I have is someone being out of state, if we're breaking any laws there, as far as state laws go.
Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, as we checked, and I think one of our attorneys is here, might give us more information, but school committee can do whatever they want to do. They, you cannot claim, when you know that somebody is out of state, you cannot claim them as part of your student body from the state, you have to reduce that number. So if you have, say, two, four, six children, you want to make sure that you do not claim them. Claiming them will be against the law. But keeping them and assuming responsibility for them, that's a decision of the school committee. And in, in our opinion, the, the way the motion was written and voted for, allowed for all children that are currently with us, with no distinction, to remain with us for one year until you discuss and see how you could, you want to revise that policy.
Okay. Mr. Gignac?
So just, just to be crystal clear, so we do not claim those out-of-state students?
We will not claim those out-of-state students. We will not.
We will...
Not.
I get, so, moving forward?
Yes, sir, moving forward.
Any further discussion? We have a motion accept, the report is a report of progress, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. Next, under public participation, we have three speakers, I think, registered. The first speaker is Mr. Georges, but I think he probably spoke at the public hearing, and so, so that's all said. The second speaker is Jonathan Richmond, who has registered to speak on the implementation of the Takeoff Space program.
I'm Jonathan Richmond of 46 Linden Street Lowell. Your Honor, a group of friends from MIT and Lowell High School graduates founded Takeoff Space because so few Lowell students make it to top colleges despite extraordinary talent, only about four or five a year, according to Gear Up Director Colleen Nguyen. Takeoff Space is about achieving success through peer-supplied college coaching that fills in for the absent help professional families typically provide. Emmy McCloyd and David Robinson met me March 2nd, accepted our program, and requested information to send out to counselors and key teachers, but Mr. Robinson told me two days later the agreement was canceled by the headmaster. When our team member, Sim D., had written to the headmaster, he'd received no reply, showing how the headmaster sets an example of bad manners to the young. It is evidence of the headmaster's poor management that he allowed his senior officers to make an agreement without controlling the process, and betrayed the school's most talented, needy students by undoing our work in an instant without meeting us. As your honor yourself informed me, the key reason the headmaster blocked us is that a Lowell High School graduate, Ellen Collins, is already coaching leading LHS students, so the school says our program's unnecessary. That's not what Karen Cassidy, the school's college admissions advisor, felt when she encouraged both Sim and myself to become involved in coaching. Ms. Collins coaches only the top five students a year without focusing on disadvantaged students. Around 40 disadvantaged students are eligible for our program, there's much unmet need and overlap of only two or three. I met Colleen Nguyen and Wayne Carrier of Gear Up last fall, and they were highly supportive and eager to help, but in March, Ms. Nguyen told the school she did not want to work with me, a second example of selfish protection of turf. I'd invited Ms. Collins as well as Ms. Nguyen to collaborate, Ms. Collins ignored my message while Ms. Nguyen went back on her word to cooperate. I wrote to Superintendent of Schools, March 16, to complain about the headmaster, but received no response. He only agreed to meet after your honor requested he do so. The meeting was a smokescreen, the written response sent by Ms. Durkin, May 25, did not respond to our issues, but merely rejected our program as the school already had, quote, "community and LHS staff partnerships." We know from the school's very poor performance in college admissions, these partnerships leave huge gaps. However, it is clear from the emphasis on allegiances rather than needs in that letter that the headmaster is protecting his relationship with someone who is serving at most five students a year at the cost of our much larger program. That is improper. The superintendent has been suggesting our plans are not concrete, untrue. We supplied him our 15-page pilot program plan, as well as detailed staff and client codes of conduct. MIT has imposed on us accountability and safety requirements beyond any the high school would require, and actually gave us an extra budget to operate on campus. We have an excellent team, including MIT students and a national leader in college coaching, who were ready to start work March 30. Counselors give out referrals to students for many other opportunities. It is outrageous we are picked on for blocking. A number of LHS staff have told us they would love to help. We asked the school committee to have this blockage lifted either directly or through policy setting, with an agenda item on the matter next committee meeting, and to also investigate the misconduct of the headmaster and superintendent. Thanks for the opportunity to speak after the superintendent illegally blocked our appearance here twice. Now, I've finished, I would just like to please record apologies for absence from Sim D. The reason he is not here explains why our program is important. He is currently caring for his adoptive grandmother, father, who was admitted to the Leahy Clinic this afternoon. He has, I, I won't give you the details of his history, but he's had a very difficult background in which he's been a caregiver for his family, huge amount of effort, and he's given a lot more to his family than he gets back. The fact that he did not have family support when he was applying for college was one of the main factors in losing him the opportunity to go to the colleges he wanted to go. He now wants to help the next generation by establishing Takeoff Space, which is family-based, unique in Lowell, and will cater for students like him who, who need the Big Brothers and Big Sisters we'll get at MIT, and also our program, a family engagement which will visit families and try and empower them for their kids' education. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Martin?
If I could, only just to be clear, that Big Brother, Big Sister is, is an actual program, and I'm, I'm assuming you're using it as a colloquial thing, but...
Yeah, we're colloquial, we have no association with Big Brothers. We are having informal relations with other NGOs, we have no relationship with that one.
Thank you very much, I just wanted to be clear about that. Thank you.
All right, if there's no further discussion, we'll move on to the next speaker, who is Mrs. Ortiz?
Hi, I'm Laura Ortiz, 1284 Lawrence Street. So I just had one quick question, so there was two things that I wanted to speak about. Do I just do the, the first one now, or...
I do, I do both.
Okay, sorry about that. All right, the first thing that I wanted to talk about was the student handbook, and I just want to clarify, you didn't vote on that yet, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So it's in, no disrespect to anyone, I know your job is hard on everything that you do, and my concern is that it still excludes the category of non-food allergen anaphylaxis. And I sent to the superintendent and the school committee the examples by email today that showed in red writing, basically, we just wanted you to put in "and" non-food allergen, you know, where it was appropriate. To talk about non-food allergen and anaphylaxis emergency care, or in the event of non-food allergen limit, exposures to non-food allergens such as insects, latex, fragrances, medications, and other materials they are allergic to. Insurance is also that any insect nesting that could cause insects to enter the classroom shall be dealt with immediately, so no life-threatening allergic child is stung or bitten during an extended classroom stay inadvertently as best we can do. The reason that that matters is my kids attend a school that happens to be the Pine Arts, and, you know, we understand obviously that bugs can get in, but there's been several instances where they've had, like, hornets nest on the windows, and during lockdown, no one really thinks about it, but if that child has no access to emergency medications, especially epinephrine, then, you know, it's something that you might want to think to get rid of immediately. And this is all that it would take, in my mind as a parent, that advocates for five or four issues, especially this one, that would clarify and make it very clear to staff that it's a category of anaphylaxis, it's not just food allergen, you know, and I'm sure that was not your intent, it was food allergen and non-food allergen. And a lot of people who I have on board with my on and on about the fact of non-food allergen might not know that, so you don't want a staff that is not clear and in the building and thinks, oh God, I can't give this child epinephrine because it's just for food allergen, you want them to just immediately, the kid gets it. So, you know, and obviously, I'm not saying use my wording, I was just showing you envisioned that you could see how easy I thought it was to just, and in a couple of words or whatever words that, you know, that you would choose to make it clear. And, and no disrespect, because I'm not saying I would write better, because obviously I wouldn't, I don't have your jobs and stuff, so that was the first one.
Okay.
Okay. So the second one, and again, when we get up to advocate, it is absolutely, and no disrespect for anything that you might want to do in policies, and I hope that you understand that, even if we stand in opposition, and if we don't say that enough. So the second thing I wanted to talk about, and I, I may be ahead of the game, so if you need to stop me, I understand, it's in regard to the feasibility of rezoning the school district. Greatly concerns me, given the 1987 desegregation order. I'm concerned as a result of any rezoning for the city of Lowell Public Schools, and here in its, everything is in regard to the rezoning, that it may allow schools with high concentration of poor and minority students to proliferate, that it may allow for elementary school students attending more racially segregated schools than they have in a generation since this federal desegregation order, that it, that the children who attend such schools may achieve far less than their peers in integrated institutions, that it would deny the federally ordered citywide integration plan and further fail to satisfy what we argue in the city of Lowell's constitutional obligation to prevent segregated schooling, so we do not end up where it was originally litigated, with hyper-segregated, low-performing public schools again. That, you know, if in our opinion to follow the law, it would be for separate is not equal, and not equal is inadequate, then rezoning the schools not only will not achieve that, it will ensure that these schools are unequal and inadequate in our belief, given past history as shown by that federal case dated prior. That it would also fail to have children of all colors, backgrounds, and socioeconomic statuses sitting and learning together in high-quality desegregated schools as required by the Constitution and the American vision of a fair and just society. So we ask simply that you do not rezon these schools and cause educational and/or other discrimination against these generation of minorities, and also non-minorities that are, are poor, whom are relieved by the original federal court order we fear thus denying them equal education, equal protection, equal due process, and equal human rights. The most vital function of state and local governments and racially segregation of any kind deprive the Hispanic and Asians and every other minority American of equal protection under the 14th Amendment and due process under the Fifth Amendment. And I may be saying a little bit out, I'm obviously not a lawyer, but the whole point is that I, I want you to think about that, because, you know, I understand it was just a map that we happened to see at the citywide parent council, but to me, the most thing that stood out was, and I believe it's called the acre, and I apologize, I'm not from the, I, I didn't grow up here, I, I came here to go to school, but what I noticed, you know, was one of the zones, you know, just stood out, and, you know, going back to when I came here, back in 1987, I think there was a difference. I think there was a difference in attitudes, I, I think, you know, I would love to see this, this city going forward, to see this incredible, you know, alternative high school, which I think is commendable, that you want to give every kid a chance, and I just fear... And I just fear that what's going to happen if you rezone these schools is we're going to get back to the segregation, we're going to get back to the thinner minorities and proponents in different schools in higher numbers than should be, and, you know, you're going to have people that, you know, have more money that are not integrated with some that don't. And I think, well, you know, the gist of what I'm saying, I'm so sorry I went on too long, but I just think it's a really bad idea, and I just don't think we should repeat a past history mistake. I think we're better than that, and I think all these kids deserve equal treatment and equal education that I know all of you can give them.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, again, I don't mean to disrespect on your hard plans for that. Thank you.
Thanks. Any discussion? I thought we'll move on to the motions. First motion of the evening is a motion by Mr. Gignac to request that the superintendent provide a district-wide report on class sizes for the upcoming school year. Seconded by Mr. Hoi. Mr. Gignac.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion speaks for itself.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor? All opposed? So voted? The next motion of the evening is also a motion by Mr. Gignac requesting that the superintendent provide a report and recommendation on the feasibility of rezoning the school district. Seconded by Mr. Hoi. Mr. Gignac.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to address the member of the public, my motion is not to go back to the way it was. I think...
I'm so sorry. I probably didn't understand what I was reading.
Sure. No. The reason for my motion was, is, in reality, we have a real space issue, and we have schools that are feeding, elementary schools feeding into middle schools that simply don't have the capacity to take them. But we do have capacity at some of the other schools. So I think, I just think it's a healthy exercise to look at the zoning structure for the district. Obviously, follow the DSEG order, because every single student deserves the highest quality education that we can possibly provide them. But I think there's a variety of topics and issues to discuss during this feasibility process, such as transportation, saving money on transportation, or making sure that each and every kid has the capability to go to the very best schools. And that's really the gist of the motion. And I hope my colleagues will appreciate that.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Any none? All in favor? All opposed? So voted? The next motion of the evening is also a motion by Mr. Gignac requesting that the superintendent provide a report on the facility repairs and improvement projects scheduled for the upcoming summer break. Seconded by Mr. Hoi. Mr. Gignac.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just a simple request for information regarding facility repairs. If you could work with the city DPW on creating this report, I think it's useful. I know a number of parents and staff members have asked me what projects are going to take place over the summer, and I don't have the answer for them. So I think this is just a good tool to provide to the public.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor? All opposed? So voted? The last motion of the evening is a motion by Mr. Hoi, requesting that the superintendent institute an early hiring candidate pool, enabling us to hire staff members in all collective bargaining agreements to obtain the highest quality candidates for the teaching and administrative positions. Seconded by Mr. Gignac. Mr. Hoi.
Thank you. The last meeting, I had a couple of motions there. One was to make sure we hire, or at least give an interview, a final interview for Lowell residents. But I think it was my colleague to my right that wanted to bring it to a policy subcommittee. So I just figured I could bring this one back in case we needed to get out there early and find help. That's all.
Any further discussion? Mr. Doherty.
Excuse me, Your Honor. I don't understand what that means, an early candidate, early hiring candidate pool. I wonder if the maker of the motion could explain what that is, that we're...
Yeah. I don't have the paperwork in front of me right now. I just have that motion. But Boston, and I believe Cambridge, has something similar to that. And it's just to make sure you get out there early to find the candidates that someone else might be getting off you.
Mr. Gignac.
Just to, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, to help Mr. Hoi, the, at the last meeting, there were two recommendations from the superintendent, two scenarios that we could adopt to, in response to Mr. Hoi's motion. This was one of those recommendations or policies. So this was, I think, number two of the policies.
Any further discussion? Ms. Martin?
Could the superintendent then tell us what, I mean, because if we vote on this tonight, we're saying it's going to be instituted. So what would, is the person who'd be responsible for instituting it, what would you envision it to be?
Thank you, Ms. Martin. I'm sorry I don't have as well the paperwork with me, because I didn't expect to be presenting on that one. But from my understanding is, if you follow the models that are used, is to create early pools by, almost like a pre-qualification of candidates in advance, so that when jobs are, when we have those jobs available, we know who to go to right away, as opposed to waiting for those jobs to be available and post and delay and get that. It's try to be a little bit more aggressive. And again, I apologize for not having that paperwork from last week. Actually, it might be here.
So would we be utilizing the, is it SchoolSpring? I don't know what the system is that we're using now for HR, for people to apply online and to manage the process. Is that it? Am I maybe making that name up?
We're using, no, we're using SchoolSpring as a public site to advertise the positions, and we're using our own internal software for people to apply for any position available. They can upload their entire information.
So generally, teachers, I'm going to say, I don't know if teachers is the focus of this, but I'm going to guess it's at least one of them. Teachers up till this point have the opportunity to apply for all teaching positions, correct? That they're licensed for? They're not like applying for the third-grade teacher at the Bailey. They, when they apply, they apply to the district, and any teaching position that they're qualified for, they'd be considered for? Is that accurate?
I'm not too sure on the details that, at the end. I know that they apply generally, they put their application, and then at the end, whether they need to make a decision on this. I think they might have to make a decision on the specific job that they want to be... You're talking, I'm sorry, do you talk in teachers from outside, or...
I'm assuming it's similar for in or out.
The in is usually considered more like a request for transfer for a specific. It would be for a specific. From the outside, I think that's where you consider a general pool, and sometimes you might even say anticipate it based on, conditional upon funding or budget and so forth. And people will apply generally for a certain position.
If I could, and I'd defer to the wishes of the maker of the motion, I'd like to get some more information, maybe even a written policy around this, I mean, as we talk about how it's going to get implemented, just because from the motion itself, it doesn't, I'd like some more details. But if we'd like to refer to our next school committee meeting, perhaps if the maker of the motion is comfortable with that.
The chair would suggest that maybe if the motion passed and the superintendent were to institute that, but then bring it back to the school committee for ratification at the end, and then maybe everybody has all the information at that point and can understand exactly what would be involved with that policy. Is that okay with everybody?
It would be up to you. I mean, my preference would be that we have the information and then we vote. But, so I'd vote no if that was the proposal, but however the maker of the motion and you would like to contain that I can vote appropriately.
That's fine. I don't mind going back to the policy subcommittee. But you might want to consider taking me off that subcommittee and putting me on athletics or something like that. Well, there's some real tough issues, like the lady that just spoke. We're just missing a couple of words for her, and her concerns are, concerns are mine. So it's very, policy is a very tough subcommittee to have when you're not a great reader. You have to read something seven times to get, to get the gist of it. I think policy could be one of the toughest subcommittees I've ever been on. And, believe me, I'm off to a rocky start, but I do appreciate the school committee deeply and all the help that we get. But the first thing I did was just to try to make sure we don't lose any students that came up through the Lowell system, that went to Lowell High School, high honors, honor society, and they're not teaching in Lowell. I can name you ten, but I'm afraid to name people. I'm just sick of losing, we talk about diversity in hiring. How about a Lowell high, high honors student that goes on to college and it's in the top 25% of their class, and they can't get a final interview or a job in Lowell? So that is the real motion that I tried to get here, but two of them came in on a recommendation. And again, I probably didn't handle it right, so I kind of agree with Ms. Martin. Go back to the subcommittee on policy and change it.
Mr. Gignac.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If it makes sense to the body, perhaps we should refer it to the personnel subcommittee? Would you like that, Mr. Hoi?
Much better. Thank you.
I'll make that a motion.
And I'll second it.
Okay. So we, we have a motion on the floor. So we have an amendment to the motion that it be referred instead of to the personnel subcommittee for a report back to the full subcommittee at the next meeting?
Yeah. Because I agree with Ms. Martin. I think we, although we got a report, we still need more information. I think it should be handled at a subcommittee level.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment? All opposed? The amendment becomes part of the motion. All in favor of the motion as amended? All opposed? So voted. Next, we move on to reports of the superintendent, of which there are many. And so the first one is the Massachusetts Teacher Evaluation Protocol. It's the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There were several requests to report on that, and the intent tonight is to give you just a progress report. The final report will be, as I will explain in a minute, once we report to the state. But those, for those of you, just a little brief refreshment reminder that the evaluation system that we follow in Lowell, well, that everybody in Massachusetts is now using, is the one that has been developed by the state, by Department of Education. And it is generally a two-year process and follows very, very, very clear and structured and procedures. And all, everyone, from superintendent, all teachers, about everybody who works in the school, almost, I would say, everybody who has a license, anybody who's required to have a license by Department of Education, is also required to follow that evaluation process. So far, as a progress report to you, is that we've talked to all the principals, have completed their evaluations. Some are still doing the last touch-ups and the last items they're trying to complete. Just also reminding you that they have several categories. There is the failing, the needs improvement, the proficient, and the exemplary. And by and large, they, generally, if you give somebody exemplary or needs improvement, then they have to write a lot more explanations as to why they did that, and failing as well. And then they have to hold meetings with the person and make sure that the person has also a chance to respond. So some of them are still, are still completing that process. Everyone has done it. I think they're all in a very good place. And we will be reporting these on, by, the deadline is June 30th, to the state. And we can, we will report to the state and to, and it will be public information as well. We report to the school committee, the summative, just a summative rating. We do not report detailed information on any individual. And so that's what, so, and as I said earlier, about everyone is evaluated, and everyone has somebody who evaluates them. With respect to the, to the school leaders and central office administrators, most of them, at least the senior administrators, are evaluated as well by the superintendent. And I am in the process, I've actually completed, most of them, had not been for this little hiccup here, we would probably have finished the last few. I still have four meetings to hold with principals, and I want to explain something particular to these principals, is that most of them are in the middle of their two-year cycle. So they've finished their first year, and this is the second year. So there's a lot of work in what I've done, what I'm looking at now, and I have to take into account all that my predecessor, the previous superintendent, has also done with these principals. So there's a lot more work than you would normally have, because you have to align and you have to make sure to follow, and particularly focus on those areas that were highlighted by the previous superintendent. And we had a couple of needs improvement that were rated by the previous superintendent, and I've spent considerable amount of time with the specific individuals on those to make sure that the concerns raised by the previous superintendent were addressed and show where they have, they have progressed. Again, without going into any detail, because we don't, I think we're in a good place with evaluating all the principals, and in the principals and evaluating assistant principals and teachers. And also, I know that my colleagues, the assistant principals, also have several administrators that they have, the coordinators and all the other administrators they have to evaluate. I think we're in a good place to meet the deadline of the state, to be reporting on June 30th. And as soon as we finish reporting that on June 30th, we will have that publicly available, and we will have a detailed presentation on those evaluations to be presented on the next meeting following that, which I believe would be July 20th.
Any discussion?
So this is, I'm sorry. So this is just kind of a progress report, because I know several of you have been asking to get some info.
Okay. The chair would entertain a motion to accept the report as a report of progress. Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Hoi, accepted as a report of progress. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And the presentation is fine, recognizing that we'll get the actual information that was requested in July. That's fine. Can I just ask a tiny piece, but I was really curious about it. The improvement plan, it's cited at the, oh, jeez, at the top of page 56. We've got the self-directed growth plan, which is developed by the educator, the directed growth plan, which is developed by both the educator and the evaluator. But then it says the improvement plan, which, to my way of thinking, is the most intensive, that's also just developed by the educator without the evaluator being involved? I got to believe the evaluator's involved in that.
I apologize, Ms. Martin. Where are you at?
Really? It's, I think it's page 56, right at the top.
Okay.
Developing the educator plans.
Thank you.
So there's the three that are listed, self-directed, directed, and then improvement. I mean, it's a small point. I just want to make sure that our, the evaluators are actually involved in, when we have an educator who's at the point that they need an improvement plan, that they're not creating it for themselves, that the actual evaluator's a part of that as well. It's a tiny point.
Well, it is. It is, and it is, and it both answers. It is that it's, when somebody is in that category, then they have to present to you an improvement plan. Of course, you have to accept it. And you have to, you know, you have a chance to, you know, to discuss it and determine what, whether it's, it's going to be a plan that is implementable, realistic or not. And, but you start with the educator.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Mr. Gignac.
Mr. Mayor, I too appreciate all of the information that was provided. I just thought the motion was strictly regarding the evaluations of the principals.
Who's actually for both?
It was two motions initially, and then later on was a follow-up motion. So there were three total.
Okay. All right. I just see the one there. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? All opposed? So voted. Item 18 was taken out of order, so we'll go to item 19, the cultural competency report. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to ask Mr. Bryan to present that item. Thank you. Brian Martin, I should say.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a follow-up to a subcommittee meeting on the high school that school committeeman Bob Gignac held in late May, with, I think, Mrs. Abrams filled in for Mrs. Durkin. And what I wanted to do is give a quick summary of the three initiatives that came forth after the fall, the incident at the school, and what we did about it. And my presentation is very brief, and I've asked the students, who are now in a standing committee on cultural competency that's been established at the high school, we have our new shirts, and are very proud of our students. With me is, let's see, I have Greta Walensky, Amy Botang, on the say, Yomani, and Quinn Breen, they're going to speak and do a quick slideshow at the end. But what I want to do is hit a couple of the highlights in the report. But what I want to do is hit a couple of the highlights in the report. The report, actually, of the three panels, had a total of 36 recommendations. A lot of them were similar in nature in respect to diversity and hiring, training, and things of that nature. So there was a constant theme, consistent theme through the reports that came out. What we focused, what I wanted to focus on are a couple of things. The first is the fact that we have established a student committee, student-driven committee that will meet at the high school and be a resource for the school if, in fact, there are other issues that arise along the way. That would be a follow-up group to deal with whatever the issue may be. And also to provide a sustainable program at the high school. This is something we believe strongly in. We want to commit to the future of the high school. I think that's why we came up with the established in 2016 theme. There were, to date, we've done some training with our students and staff that were on the original committee. Sheila Oaks from the Community Health Center does cultural competency training. She will also be training, doing a training for the entire high school staff on the last day of school. She will also be involved with us going forward with additional training. We also have a company that will be coming in the first day of school when we go back with the staff that will do a training on teaching through the lens of cultural competency, so that you're not just simply dealing with specific classes and how you do it, but through the lens of how you actually teach. And we think that'll be a productive way to initiate that kind of training throughout the school. The other piece that I think from my point of view that is important to share this evening is a recommendation on the titles of the leadership teams at the high school. I formally recommend, and this came from the Student Committee and Restorative Justice, a recommendation to change the housemaster title to a different title. And we met and the housemasters have agreed unanimously to move forward with the title of a house dean. It removes the master from the title. I think it's time that that take place. And I recommend for the headmaster to do the same, to have the headmaster officially called head of school. And I would recommend that, the committee, this evening. If you look at what's happened in our times, I think the high school should be part of where we go in the future with our titles and just who we are as a school community. Princeton University, Harvard University have gone forward with similar changes. And I wanted to share a quote from the Princeton University that when they announced it, they said, "Though we are aware that the term 'master' has a long history of use in universities and private schools especially, seems that by now that that term is anachronistic and unfortunate for the positions." And I totally believe that. It's time we should be a school that recognizes what those terms have meant in the past and move beyond it and then work with our student population to build on where we've been the past year and in the future for the high school. So with that, I turn it over to Anasee. I think she's going to be the speaker, and Amy and Greta. And I'm going to run the PowerPoint. I'm going to try, and it's pretty quick.
Good evening. As Mr. Martin said, my name is Anasee Omwani. I am the moderator of the Lowell High School Standing Committee on Cultural Competence. I'm going to keep this very brief. I know we're sort of running short on time. So the SCC exists to evaluate school climate, cultural sensitivity, and biases, both expressed and unconscious, with regard to race, ethnicity, the LGBTQ community, socioeconomic groups, religious groups, and defined or other self-divine groups at the high school. I think this is perhaps most concisely put in our mission statement, which reads as follows. The Lowell High School Standing Committee on Cultural Competence exists to work with the head of school to promote curriculum reform and implement professional development and other school and community activities that create an awareness and respect for our fellow human beings and their experiences. So earlier this year, we made our preliminary recommendations, which were as follows. We first recommended parent-community forums, in which we would bring in local leaders from different ethnic groups or community leaders to talk about their culture and bring awareness around their community group. The second is mandatory cultural and race sensitivity training for staff, which, an example of that would be large and small-scale professional development, videos with discussion activities with students, and the creation of support documents. The third was that the staff would actively collaborate with students in incorporating diversity within the staff and faculty. For example, creating student-staff workshops, advising on curriculum, and creating school-wide activity. The fourth was anonymous student feedback in the classroom environment. The fifth was Challenge Day or similar activity, which would be created and coordinated by students. The sixth being freshman orientation activity, basically focusing on school inclusivity. The seventh would have been a language partners program, in which we would pair native speakers, ELL students at our school, with students who are learning the language that they speak. And the eighth would have been creating an advisory committee that is diverse and includes students, that would ensure diversity in recruitment and hiring. These recommendations and the establishment of the committee alone has led to a series of policy changes and new initiatives that we will be going forward with in the 2016-2017 academic school year, several of which were just spoken about by Mr. Martin. These initiatives came to be after a series of meetings with Mr. Martin, my co-advisors, Mr. Robert DeLosa and Mrs. Yvette Cheeks, neither of who are here, and were approved by the full Standing Committee. During the next academic year, we will be implementing and instituting the following policy changes. The parent-community forums, in which we will bring in community leaders to speak on the Red Raider Report, which is our school news show, which runs every day during our advisory. The second would be mandatory cultural and race sensitivity training for staff, in which faculty and staff will participate in cultural competency training. The first, which is to be conducted Monday, actually, as Mr. Martin said, by Sheila Oaks, and the second one to be done in August when we return to school. The third was that staff would actively be collaborating with students to incorporate diversity, which would be done through school-wide activities and workshops, perhaps an unconscious-biased workshop that would go class by class by class and not only incorporate faculty and staff, but students as well. And they could be done during the freshman orientation. The fourth being student evaluations on classroom environment and destruction, though that is still under negotiation, to my understanding. The next being Challenge Day, and so we won't actually be following the program as it is per se, but rather our own variation of the program, in which students will be organizing "around the world" cultural festival and acting as informed teachers with an additional speakers bureau, so we have the academic element as well. And the language partners program, which was revised after hearing two presentations from two of Lowell High's Generation Citizen classes, the first focusing on Islamophobia and the second focusing on discrimination in the classroom and unconscious bias towards ELL students and how that affects their academic performance, in which mainstream and ELL students will shadow each other. So not only are the ELL students shadowing the mainstream students, but the mainstream students are also getting the reverse and shadowing the ELL students, which we believe will push students to want to be advocates for educational equity. And yes. And so the next would be to ensure diversity in hiring. And so through several meetings, it became clear that having students sit on and be directly involved with the hiring process would not be possible for several reasons. And so instead, students will sit on an advisory committee to ensure diversity in recruitment and hiring. The next will be a poster campaign, which also was the product and a proposal of one of the Generation Citizen classes, in which we will create, distribute, and display posters and flyers that accurately represent the beliefs of groups that are often misrepresented, ostracized, and discriminated against, not only in our own school community or in Lowell, but in the larger national and international community, as we are a global society and Lowell is perhaps the most representative of that. And the final initiative that we have is actually very interesting. It's called defamation the play. So Lowell High will be hosting a play called defamation this fall for staff on November 3rd, which allows people to examine their own biases outside of the situation that are specific and therefore personal to them. So it's very interesting. Yes. And so those are our proposals for the 2016-2017 academic year. And then I just have three seniors who are here who all have graduated and will now be leaving off to college. And so they're just going to talk about their experience with the SCCC and what they hope that the SEC will accomplish for future students. Thank you very much.
So my name is Amy Botang, and one of the things that I learned with the Standing Cultural Competency Task Force is that the teachers actually care about what we think and like they care about how we feel, because with the incident that happened in October, I think it was, I like, I didn't really think I could turn to any teachers to talk about them with because they're uncomfortable or like they're not allowed to talk about it. But like, when this task force was formed, I was like, okay, so there's teachers who actually care, who actually want to listen to us. And then like, further from that, we talked about, like, Anasee was talking about the by, oh my goodness, I'm so sorry. And we had the Generation Class Citizens come talk to us about like what they want to do with the poster campaign thing. Like, I just learned like far more about the school, like how they actually care. Like, some teachers say like, oh yeah, we care, blah, blah, blah. They don't show up, but like, being part of this task force, like, they put themselves out there and like, it helped me, like, it made me feel comfortable and confident in the school, like we're going somewhere positive. And something that I hope that we accomplish is that like, I hope it, other than like next year and like the years after, I hope it like, the task force stands for the next 50 years, the 100 years, like till the school, like, till school year's over. I don't know. Like, I don't like, I don't know. I just wanted to like accomplish and do really a lot of good things because it has changed the school. And like, I know we'll like continue to make change in like school and like the Lowell and like, like Anasee said, hopefully nationally, because like this is a big thing and I hope like every school makes their own cultural competency task force because it has changed me as a person. So thank you.
Hi. My name is Greta Walensky, and my experience on the Standing Cultural Competency Committee is really positive. I was really honored to be asked to be a part of it. And it was kind of a beautiful experience to be, having been in the Lowell Public School System my whole life, to see race talked about and addressed in such an explicit way, which I'd never experienced in all my years in the school system. And to be part of kind of the first wave of students. And especially, this was inspiring because it was kind of facilitated by Anasee and sort of designed firsthand by her. And to be a part of such a kind of groundbreaking committee was really interesting for me. And I feel like the discussions we had and the motions were, the actions we're putting into motion, the goals for the committee are really great and really necessary. And I feel like this very unveiled, no sugarcoating discussion on race and class and gender, et cetera, et cetera, that is being discussed on the committee is what Lowell High needs and what all of the city needs. And I think that the committee is going to continue to change the trajectory of the school and how students of different classes and races view each other and will result in a more unified school, both with staff, relations to staff, students to students, staff to students, everything. I think that this is what the school and the city needs to move forward and be the best that it possibly can be. Thank you.
My name is Quinn Breen, and my experience on the Standing Committee on Cultural Competency has been very positive also. I'd say that the committee made me realize the importance of communicating with other people to accomplish a goal. Everyone brought their own knowledge, their own experiences and perspectives to the committee's work, and it was all really important to the work that we were doing. So it made me, it made me better at working together with other people to achieve things. Like Amy said, it empowered me as a student and made me realize my own potential as someone who can create change in my community. It showed me that my school cares about what I say and my school believes in me, which was something I think is powerful when students realize that. Going forward, I think that I have great faith in the committee's ability to create change in the school community. It really is a student-led initiative, and I think that students will always be, there'll always be enthusiasm for the committee's work among the students because it directly impacts them, and it's something that they'll always be interested in doing. So I think that it will always be around and continue to have a positive impact on the school committee. I mean, not school committee, it's community, sorry. So, thank you.
Sorry, just one more annoying ad lib. If I could then just take this moment to thank Mr. Martin, the members of the school committee, and Superintendent Calhoun for following the incident in October, being so open to dialogue and enthusiastic about creating positive, sustainable, systematic change in our school community, so that we can ensure students of the future are able to meet and exceed their potential in an environment where they feel safe, where their voices are both listened to and respected, and that upon leaving, they feel empowered with both knowledge and empathy, so that they might go on to be ambassadors of Lowell High and create a better tomorrow. So, thank you for that.
I'm very proud of these students, as you can tell. So if there's any questions, we can try and help out. If not, we appreciate the opportunity to finish what we started. And for Mr. Gignac's committee, I wanted to have a full report. The first one was just on the restorative justice. This is the whole, all three. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Martin. And Mr. Gignac?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Head of School, Martin. And most importantly, thank you to the students and recent graduates. I think it's really remarkable what you've been able to do, and one of the speakers was right on. I think it's a groundbreaking Standing Committee that you really crafted, and moving forward is going to have a tremendous impact on the 3,000, 4,000 students that are in that high school each and every day. So I thank you for that. I think you really turned a negative into a positive, and you should be congratulated for that. So thank you very much.
Mr. Howey?
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to say, I heard a lot of criticism about the Superintendent, the way he handled this. And I wasn't sitting here back in October, but after I seen everything and sitting on the Subcommittee with him, I'm so glad my granddaughter goes to Lowell High. It's crazy. And I think what you did, the way you handled it, and the way Mr. Martin brought it all together for us, just makes us a great school. I'm so proud of the city, it's crazy. It was the biggest issue I have ever seen in my life. I might have a hard time, because I'm kind of an old dog, to get off that name, housemaster, to go to house dean, because all I can think of is Mrs. Keeley. That's who my housemaster was, and I'm telling you, she was unbelievable. And she saved my grandson's life, my son's life. Not only did she save mine, she was a very important person. So I might make a mistake now and then and say housemaster, but I don't mean it. You did a great job, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Further discussion? Chair would entertain a motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. Howey, seconded by Mr. Gignac. Discussion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted. Good job. The next item is a report from the Superintendent regarding Lowell Public Schools' Parent and Student Handbook for 2016-2017, or the revisions that there are.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask the School Committee to sit back and relax, as I ask the Assistant Superintendent to read us the manual. No, she's not going to read all of it, so we will actually ask Roxanne. Go ahead. Do you want to introduce Roxanne? Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Superintendent. I won't take you through every page. I do want to honor Mrs. Ortiz's comments and to also, and I wish you were still here, and I will communicate this with her tomorrow as well. We have met on two separate occasions with the Health Department relative to the policy. We plan to bring that forward with the amendments. It's really just moving the food aspect out of the policy so that it's specific, and that was the intent of the policy. But I can see that some parents may interpret it differently, and we don't want that to be misinterpreted at all. So if you so wish, once Dr. Howe and I review the handbook, we certainly would say that if you approve the handbook minus those revisions, I will bring those forward to you in July at the next meeting. So I would turn it over to Discipline and Operations Specialist, Dr. Howe, to take you through the revisions of the Lowell High School Handbook. And then many of the revisions that are in the Lowell High Handbook are also mirrored in the elementary and middle, and I can walk you through those very quickly as well.
Good evening, everyone. So you have the actual handbook with the pages in red that have changes, but you also have a two-page document that briefly outlines what the changes are. changes are. A lot of the changes are just updating of information. So I'm going to I think the easiest way is for me to just run through it and then we can have the discussion or questions after. So page six, update school committee and central office staff members. Page seven, an update of the Lowell High administrative staff. We had to uh remove an administrator budget cuts. Page eight, add the Lowell High School core values to the mission statement. Page 11, just update of the distinguished alumni roster. Page 12, you've already voted on, the uh school calendar for next year. Page 15 comes out of a recommendation from the school's grading committee that was made up of teachers and department chairs facilitated by Amy McLeod, the Director of Curriculum and Instruction. The handbook has read for at least a decade that the first and third quarter, the lowest grade given on a report card would be a 50 and we just want to modify it so that it's every quarter the lowest grade given is a 50. And it's an issue of equity and it's an also uh the ability for students to recover. The next page 17 is just updating the cost of AP exams. They were $92 this year. Page 17, we have had progress reports at the high school for several years. Somehow in the handbook the the old term warning was still there so we need to change that. Page 19 is an update on the National Honor Society with a link to the bylaws. Page 20, recommendation by the house masters to include the following in regards to the ID badge policy. Please note that students found without an ID badge after the first period of the day will receive an automatic detention. Again, we are all very aware of how essential it is for all students to be be wearing ID badges. This is just another tool to encourage it. Page 20, for prohibited items, we just want to add vape next to e-cigarettes. Page 20, prohibited items, another um item to we need to add, hoverboards. The new danger out there. Page 21, this was a recommendation from the house masters and actually supported by a staff and a survey survey um two to one. Policy change. I'm sorry, house deans. I'm already being corrected by the headmaster. Uh cellphone use. We want to add silent cellphone use may occur in the hallways during class changing time. Silent cellphone use is allowable for students' individual communication needs. Photography and videography are prohibited in the halls without prior permission. This privilege must not interfere with students arriving to class on time and the phone must be turned off before entering class. Page 22, an update to the policy on earbuds headphones, just highlighting why they are banned and it's a safety issue. Students need to be aware and able to hear if we have to make emergency announcements. Page 20, um I'm sorry, page 22, again recommended by the house deans. Um just redundant language in the dress code policy. Page 23, again reinforcing that hoverboards are not allowed on school property at all. Page 25 and 26 is an um update on information on food service, the fact that it's free breakfast and free lunch and information for parents about the program. Page 29, adding to major violations under harassment, the following language, including inappropriate racial, cultural, religious, verbal, verbal, behavioral conduct. Page 43, again a recommendation by the house deans, update the tardy policy to have a student arriving after 8:15 a.m. without a valid note may be assigned detention. Page 50 is from the Health Department, an up update on our information about immunization. It used to be grade seven, seven to 11 had one policy and grade 12 a separate one and now grade 12 is the same as seven to 11. Page 55, an update on student activities, what our actual current clubs are. Page 63, 64, and 66, adding the term gender identity to our policies on harassment, bullying, and equal educational opportunities. Again, from the Health Department, under our drug and alcohol policy regarding authorized medicine, just clarifying it to refer back to the school health section of the parent handbook. Page 71, the acceptable use policy, we want to add a bullet to the inappropriate use that says any other action that violates the discipline code of conduct and or substantially disrupts the educational process to include the use of personal devices. And finally, there are forms at the end of the handbook. One is the emergency medical emergency form and the Health Department just asked us to update um some of the questions being asked. Phew, so that's two pages of changes. Any questions?
Any questions? Ms. Martin?
Can I just ask, so having looked at it and I know that we're just making this move now to the new titles, can we will we have enough time to do a search and replace and okay, so that can just be done in one full? Great.
I did just make a note of that and we would have to change that also on uh the um the staffing page as well and then throughout the document.
Mr. Hoi.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. On page 15, academic performance, you said something about grades. Uh if I remember right, was it's a flunking grade at 62 or 65?
Passing starts at 65.
Passing. So see, when I was in high school and a lot of teachers would bend the rules a little bit and kind of give you the extra two points so you didn't you could make a baseball football team. But nowadays, well, it's a very important issue to me because when you say to someone you got a 55, well, back then if he didn't make it through high school, US Army would take him. He had a place to go. Now, if you say 58 you got, after the second quarter, that kid thinks he's done. You know, I'm not gonna I'm not gonna get there. So I'm not saying we want to give him a passing grade all the time but we have to be careful because alternative schools were talking about them tonight. We don't have enough of them. We don't have enough trade schools and I know they're doing the best job they can at the high school right now to keep them all active and important. And to me, it's a real big issue right now. Dropout rate they say is getting better. I'm not sure about that. I know it is at Lowell High. It seems to be getting better and I know the I what I've watched since I've been here is incredible. The dance, the music, everything is keeping kids in the schools. So that page 15 to me, I have a lot of concerns with and um I don't know if we can tell some teachers to be careful when you give someone a flunking grade but uh to me, it's a big issue and maybe throwing it up in front of my colleagues here, they'll hear what I'm saying and we can do something about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question for the superintendent. The the innovation school that we just approved tonight, will they be using this handbook or their own their own?
They will have the autonomy to uh create um some of their own uh policies but they'll they'll be utilizing the bulk of this.
Okay, okay. Thank you for I'll make a motion to approve the recommended changes to the Lowell High School Handbook.
Second.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron? Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
Okay, so we also have the uh the middle school handbook. Mr. Arthur?
Yes, before uh Dr. Howe leaves, I'd like to publicly thank her uh for uh her efforts in making sure that annually this gets um this gets done along with uh Staff Council Michael Ortiz and Jane Moshe Canty who always ensure that we have all the updated policies in the handbook. So thank you. So on to the Elementary and Middle. This will be fairly quick because many of the changes are redundant. So page 1 dash 6, that's the medical emergency forms uh that uh just were changed with the recommendation of the Health Department. Page 1 dash 10, update the school committee and central office staff members. Um 1 dash 11, update school principals. Uh 1 dash 14, uh the school calendar that was already voted on. Uh 1 dash 16, the school committee um voted in a slight um change in the retention policy for our middle school students so that we could provide intervention early instead of having them fail. Um and then also put in uh when when budgeted. That was already uh voted on by the school committee. Uh 2 dash 2, the vape to the e-cigarettes. 2 dash 2 um as well, hoverboards. Uh 2 dash 3, the update the proper dress. Uh 2 dash 5, 6, the food service updates. 3 dash 3, adding the language, including inappropriate racial, cultural, religious, verbal, behavioral conduct. And then in the appendices, um for uh the appendix D1, adding the term gender identity in the harassment and bullying. 5 dash 1, clarifying that medication policy as recommended by the Health Department. G dash 2, immunization records. Uh grade 12, that was that addition. And then um I 4, update the acceptable use policy.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve? Uh Mr. Dakota?
Kennedy.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um on page 2 dash 6, uh the second full paragraph, it says if you child, I think should be edited to if your child. Just picked up on that.
Good catch. It's probably in the high school as well because it was cut and paste. Thank you.
Possible, yes. It's that teacher thing. I'm sorry.
I get the teacher thing and uh I'm really mad at myself.
Any further discussion? Do we have a motion to approve by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Dougherty? Discussion, roll call.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron? Mr. Gignac?
Yeah.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
The next item is the online waitlist. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And at this point, I will ask Assistant Superintendent Janine Durkin to present that item.
Thank you. Um this is in response to a motion by school committee member Jackie Dougherty, approved at the March 16th uh school committee meeting. Um the specific report addresses a second part of the motion uh that's alluded to and it's to look into making the waitlist transparent for our families in the Lowell Public Schools. I'd really like to acknowledge the work of John Dakota and our um Director of Information, Communication and Technology, William Silver, uh for um actually in a very timely manner getting this together. Um and it it with your approval this evening, it will be ready to roll tomorrow. So um what the technology department did is they they tried to figure out a way that they could um post this with with keeping confidentiality for children. And so uh they are going to um utilize the LACID and uh John can walk you through that. We also um have thought a lot about um the potential for updating our waitlist. So I know there's been a lot of conversation over the last few weeks uh relative to that and um there is not an uh at present an an annual update of that waitlist so that in some incidents um incidences, when when Mr. Dakota um would call a a home and say there is space available. Are you interested? A family member would say, well, my child is attending this school and they're very happy there and we are not interested at this point. So that we believe that we may have some inflated uh numbers. So um there is uh we also proposed to you at this time that um we could in um early June, uh I mean early July, we could conceivably, um if you uh so wish, we could create through the use of phones, um a survey that would um we would connect with families and say to them uh at such and such a time, please confirm your interest in remaining on the waitlist. And then um then the Family Resource Center would um the IT department would be able to log every person that track that. We'd be able to find out the families that did not respond and we'd be able to um contact those other families. So we believe that if we did that annually, we would have a much more um solid idea of what our real waitlist is. So I'll turn it over to um Mr. Dakota to just share with you the specifics of how the online waitlist would work.
Mayor, Superintendent, members of the school committee, Assistant Superintendent Durkin pretty well summed it up. So have a good night. Pretty much. That's it. Uh I do want to thank Assistant Superintendent Durkin and Bill Silver, our IT director. Um this was not an easy task, uh be quite frank, um because any reports that we run within our student information system, all report personal information which can never be posted online. So after spending some time with a report where we identified to hide certain information and just give out the LACID numbers, the locally assigned student IDs. And in the memorandum that you may have in your packet uh from Mr. Silver to Assistant Superintendent Durkin, um if you go to the last page, once the once the parents navigate themselves through the website, there'll be the the fourth page, there'll be four columns. That's all there will be, four columns. The LACID number, the school of choice, then there'll be a column, the third column will be a true or false column. True would mean there is a sibling, false would maybe be no sibling. And then the current grade that they're in. That is all. The IT department will be the custodian of this document. Okay? Um I just to reiterate on Assistant Superintendent Durkin's um comment concerning uh the the waitlist, I know that many of you received a waitlist um document with um 2,000 students on the waitlist. That is, in our opinion, very inflated numbers because there will be times, for example, we may have a student that registers for the McCullough this year and I may not be able to satisfy that uh that request. And let's say we we send that student to the green ouch. Well, next year, I may give that that family a call and say, I think we have an open spot for you. And you know, a lot of the comments are, well, my child's been there for a year. They love the school. They love their teacher. We'd rather stay. So when you did see those numbers, I would say take that with a grain of salt because um I don't think they're as true as what literally what they say. Um so that's pretty much the summation of um where we are in the transparency of this document. Like I said, I want to reiterate, the IT department will be the custodian of this document. Okay? Once a student is assigned to their waitlist school on a bi-weekly uh basis, um IT department will update. During the uh high-volume times of end of August, beginning of September, we will then do it on a weekly basis. But um once again, Mr. Silver's expertise in this was very valuable and uh we couldn't have done it without him. So I'll take any questions or comments that you may have.
Any discussion? Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh I'm John, the only concern I have is um
That would be Mr. Dakota.
Mr. Dakota. You don't want me to do, never mind.
We won't go down that road.
Is is the simplicity of the webpage that the parents have to go to?
Yes, um it goes right to the Family Resource and then there's a tab that says waitlist school. Just follow it, click it. Very simple.
Yeah, okay.
Very simple.
Because that could be a detriment if it's just slightly, even the slightest confusing.
And I think that's where Mr. Silver's expertise came through.
Okay, good.
He really did a great job on this.
Right, thank you.
So I also, um just a little follow-up on that, um just to let you know that there will be a connected message going out to uh families and um alerting them that this is on the website and for the first uh month or so, there'll be a banner that goes across and says access the website, um access the uh waitlist. So there'll be a little bit of a tutorial for them and um as you can see, it's you know, uh pretty clear once you get there and there'll be all the information that's in your report listed there for the families.
Mr. Gignac. Are you all set, Mr. Dakota? Mr. Gignac?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um through you to the Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Dakota. Is there a search tool? Can you type in your child's LACID number and then it brings you to where they fall?
You will have to go through the process of getting onto the Family Resource uh page and then on the side tab it'll have waitlist school and then be directed that way. There will be no, you will not be able to put the LACID at this point. It'll be just the list that comes up. So a parent will have to know the child's LACID number.
I which which is difficult enough but so what they have to do is 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 scroll through the
Right, there'll be tabs on the Right, there'll be tabs on the schools on the bottom, but it'll go right to alphabetically, Mr. Gignac, so it will start off at...
Alphabetically by school.
By school, and just scroll down.
But they have to, they have to scroll through the first column, which is the LACID numbers, and find their child's LACID number?
Assistant Superintendent Durkin.
So I had brought this forward last meeting, that Mr. Silver said that in order to put a specific tab, that a parent could go right to the school, at this point, right now, what they would have to do is manually input each of those items, and it would be really challenging for the staff to be able to maintain that bi-weekly, as they have hoped to do. So what we're presenting to you is our first step in the process. It's not perfect, but it will, at least, parents will be able to scroll down to the school, and then they're going to have to find their child's LACID.
So I understand that, I'm not so concerned with finding the school, I'm concerned with finding their child's number. And then, because you can be on multiple waitlists, correct?
No, you cannot, no. You are on your number one preferred school waitlist.
Well, that's not what, that's not what people understand. I mean, it's, my concern is that if you have, your child has this LACID number, and you're going to scroll through, if there's 150 kids on the waitlist, you know, just using fake numbers, you're going to have to scroll through and find that number, and then look to see, is there a number column to see what, where you fall on the waitlist in that school?
Yes, there's a number column to the left.
So it's not on the sheet, but it's on the website?
Right, it will be on the website, they have a number assigned. So what I can do for you is I can, not having Mr. Silver here, I can bring that to him to see if there is a way that we can do a quick search for a family.
I'm sure there is. And we just gave Mr. Silver over a million dollars for a technician, so I think he can find it.
Okay, I'll tell him that.
Concerning the tabs, though, that is something that they are working on from a school basis. They are working on that.
Okay, that's great.
Wanted to get it out, at least for this upcoming school year, so parents would see their list.
Thank you. If I may, Mr. Mayor, I want to add a little, yeah, it can be done. It's a technology thing, anything in technology can be done. It's a matter of time and resources. Mr. Silver had just notified me two days ago that the company that EdLine that owns this, which Blackboard really owns all of them, has just purchased another, the largest website, which is SchoolWire, for schools. And he's contemplating switching, because he knows that EdLine is going to, they're going to drop EdLine eventually, so he's contemplating switching, it's the same company now, just switching the platform. Thus, he doesn't want to put too much effort into development of resources into this one, he wants to focus on switching over the next few weeks in the summer into that. And I'm sure when we get that, we can add any enhancements to the page.
Are you all set, Mr. Gignac? Ms. Dougherty?
I think, Your Honor, and thank you for all the people who put the work into doing this. I think it's been a long time coming, that we have a system like this that's transparent and available to our public. I guess I've got one question, is there going to be any language that discusses how you move on the list, that siblings have priority, you know, the way, the real policy around how we assign students? Is there a language that's going to be there?
There is, in the memorandum that you see, there is a school assignment policy that you can click right onto at, when you're right on the waitlist tab. So you'll be able to click that on, there it is, either siblings, space availability, minority slash non-minority, and the criteria involved in that.
Location is still one of those factors, right? If you live across the street, that does have some play, or no?
When all of the criteria are satisfied, the neighborhood school child has preference.
Okay. And then my other question or clarification is, are we actually going to be doing this survey to try to clean up that list?
We wanted to present that to you, and we would go forward, we're planning to do that in July.
Excellent, thank you.
Any further discussion? Can I just ask you one question?
Sure, Mayor.
You have three choices, right?
That's correct.
And so with this system, the only one that will be tracked will be your first choice?
That is correct.
So if you were on deck for your second choice, you'd have no way of knowing that?
We've, it's always been in the preference of the first choice. So if you were a kindergartner and came in, and you would want the Pine, McCullough, and Green Alge as your three choices, if we could not satisfy the Pine, it would then go into the next lottery of the next school, okay? And then the third choice as well. For the month of March, this past March, all of our kindergarteners got either their first, second, or third choice. So everyone was satisfied. Actually, only 42 students were not given their first choice for kindergarten this year, which is a huge accomplishment for us this year. But to answer your question, Mayor, on the waitlist, it is the number one preferred school.
Okay.
Okay.
So you don't know where you stand with your second choice or with your third choice? I mean, I can imagine that there's probably some people that have first choice, second choice, it's kind of a toss-up, you know what I mean? So that they'll take either one. But you're only going to be able to know which, your first choice school, you're not going to be able to know where you stand on your second choice.
I think that's something that we could probably look at, further on down the line with the Assistant Superintendent was talking about, that with the new, actually, what the superintendent was talking about with Mr. Silver and the SchoolWire there. But right now, that has been past precedence, that's the way we've done it in the past, our first choice.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks.
If there's no other questions, though, on a side note, this afternoon at four o'clock, we conducted a lottery for the fifth-grade STEM Academy. I'm happy to say that 67 fourth graders signed up for the STEM Academy. Fifty? Fifty-eight, fifty-six, yeah, 56 will be sent letters tomorrow. I will personally call the other 11 families to let them know of the status of what would happen. Obviously, it's very fluid, but we're quite happy, and Mr. McCreeven's thrilled, that 56 new fifth-grade students be coming to the STEM Academy.
Thank you.
If I may add a comment to that, is that repercussion of that is that all those 32 class sizes that we were worried about are not going to happen, because we eliminated 56 from those. So if you do the math, and we, I know that Mr. Liam was very happy to learn that about 16 or so are, were distant to his school, and now are going to the Rogers School STEM Academy. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to accept it as a report of progress. We have a motion of that effect by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Hoey. Discussion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. Item 22 is taken out of order, and so we'll move on to item 23, which is a report from the superintendent regarding the planning for student, the Planning for Student Growth Report. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. This motion was actually brought up several times, and as well with the former school committee talked about, and I think it's really time to sit down with our partners in the city and look at this really seriously in the multi-year forecast of student growth. We can't keep doing what we're doing, just trying to solve last minute, try to figure out seats and so forth. So I have asked Assistant Superintendent Durkin to lead this effort, and I've asked her to form a task and invite our partners from the city to take seats and be part of this effort, and also some community representatives. And I'm going to ask Assistant Superintendent Durkin to give us some information.
Thank you. So the report that you have, the plans for this task force, for them to address three separate motions, the first was one brought forward by Mr. Gendron, requesting the superintendent prepare a contingency plan to accommodate the increasing middle school population expected for the 2017-18 school year, and report to the Facility Subcommittee. Second one by Mr. Gendron, requesting the superintendent develop a five-year facility plan to handle middle school population growth. And then the third one by Ms. Dougherty, requesting the superintendent provide the committee with a report that looks at student population growth and trends in the near term, as well as planning out for the next five to 10 years. So the plan for this task force, and you can see the committee members that will participate in this committee, we will be reaching out to some other community reps for this. The plan is that this task force would convene beginning in early fall, and with the main focus of looking at our student popularity, population relative to class size, student needs, and our building capacity and transportation. So the recommendations of this committee will be brought forward to the school committee and city council for action planning and consideration in our five-year plans. Additionally, the second part of, the first part of Ms. Dougherty's motion, she asks the superintendent provide the committee with a report that looks at student population growth and trends in the near term. In 2013, a former deputy superintendent of Finance and Operations worked with OMR Architects, and they put together, can you hear me all right? It's okay, okay. They put together a very extensive report, which I will read to you now, no, but it is quite an extensive report that gives a lot of information that we feel that the task force can utilize, and we don't have to reinvent the wheel. There is a lot of information relative to the facilities, what this, what our capacity is, also to our school population projected numbers. So I shared those, some of the highlights of that report with you tonight. And just to let you know that the 2014-15 projected numbers from the report are quite comparable to our actual numbers, because when you look at our current numbers, there are this category of other in our student enrollment, and that is students who are in the special ed process, many of them not in school yet, but because we maintain them on our records, because they need to have the testing and the assessment. So that's around 223, so we're right around the 14-8 that is projected by the report that was provided. So I think this will be a good tool for us going forward, and I'm looking forward to working with Mr. Frisch and the other team members to put together a plan for you.
Any discussion? Chair would entertain a motion to accept it as a report of progress. Motion by Mr. Hoey, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Discussion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. Next is a report from the superintendent regarding a legal consult update. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, this report is in answer to a motion made by school committee member Jackie Dougherty, requesting, you know, a legal opinion on the past practice of our, of children of our employees attending, none outside of our district, attending our schools. We, the, we are looking at the documentation, we've been meeting with the, with our attorney Hall, and there's a lot of work to be done. Prior to 2011, records were not kept digitally, so you can't just go and search and download them. So there's a lot, literally going through files and files, and they are doing that as we speak, as we, as of this morning, they were doing that. And we're going to collect all the information, and we'll turn it over to Mr. Hall, so he can develop that opinion, and as soon as we give him all the information, we will be happy to report back to the school committee on that legal opinion.
Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the report as a report of progress by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. DeCorto. Discussion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. The next is a report from the superintendent regarding the civics curriculum. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On this report, I'm going to ask Mrs. Claire Abrams, our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, to present this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. So I'm happy to report, this is a motion from Ms. Dougherty, request the superintendent provide the committee with a report on civics curriculum within the district, including when and how it is addressed, and through which grades, levels, and which programs are in place, to make sure that our students learn the importance of being engaged citizens in democracy. I think it was perfect tonight to have the high school students here. That kind of sums up a lot of what's been going on. They truly represented what we're looking for in this district. And I see this happening at the elementary and the middle level as well. We do have a program called Children Discovering Justice, that teachers have been trained in it from grades K to five. That's a program that encompasses a lot of different things that the students do, but they do a lot of readings, and then they're asked to respond to those readings, and they're asked to defend some of their responses. So it's building character within them, and it's building citizenship, too. It's an excellent program. There's also at the second grade level, though I haven't seen it yet, still waiting, well, probably running out of time, but whatever, they have a trial of the teddy bear that the little second graders do. So they're learning these, you know, these different steps of what it means to be a citizen, what are the things you should look for, all the way up. And when we get into the middle school, the fifth, sixth, and seventh and eighth grade level at two of our middle schools, the Stark Losa and the Robinson, they're actively involved in the mock trial. I don't know if anyone has had the opportunity to sit on, to be a juror for any of those programs, but we really see the children aspire to, you know, really, whatever the topic is, and we work very closely with Judge Blitzman on this, he's very active in this and has actually helped us move it forward. It's wonderful to see the kids in action that night. So I recommend strongly, moving ahead for next year when that comes up, reach out to Carolyn Rochelo. It's a great evening, and we do see our students active citizens in trying to describe what it means to be a citizen, and how do you defend something, or how do you oppose something, and go through all the steps that they learn through these programs. And then the rest of this report, I'm not going to read it all to you, but there's a lot of information coming from the high school as well. I wanted to thank Mr. Delosa. They're very active at Lowell High School, as you can see from the report. There's a lot of citizenship and a lot of programs in place. I will say, over the past five years, I've seen this grow tremendously. We started off small. I learned that a long time ago, start small steps and you'll grow. And I think it has grown, not to say it's where it should be, but I think we're on the right track, and I think moving forward, we'll see more come out of this program. So hopefully, the middle schools, more than two, will have the mock trial system next year. Thank you. Any questions?
Any discussion? Chair would entertain a motion to accept it as a report of progress by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. DeCorto. Any further discussion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. The next item is STEM at Lowell High School. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is again a report, the request of the mayor, requesting that the administration develop a STEM curriculum at Lowell High. As you know, we've had already started some discussions with Lowell High, we formed an advisory committee with Lowell High. I'd like to also explain that much, much of what we is in this report, and much of what we, when we talk about a STEM program, much of it exists already in the high school in the form of various courses spread around the curriculum. And the effort that we're trying to do is bring that into a very concise course of study, well-identified as a STEM program. Add to the academic component of it is also other STEM initiatives, such as Lead the Way and so forth. So this is a work in progress, we're currently still working, Mr. Barton, myself, and Mrs. Abrams, and other members of the teams of the high school and the curriculum team to come up with that. And the intent is to, that some of the stuff that is not said in this, necessarily, this report, that gives you the intent, is to come up with a, something that is well-identified as a course of study for STEM, that a high school student can identify with and say, "This is what we want to do." Now, keep in mind that all of these courses are open to everybody, and we would like to have all the students, really, take advantage of the STEM courses. And there will be some courses, I'm sure, down the road, as we, we'll start with what we have, for every grade, nine, 10, 11, 12, there'll be some others that will be identified that potentially would have to be added to complement and complete the product. There will be also a second part that is non-academic, which is the internships, projects, and capstone projects, or anything like that, that will be identified in the future. But we will be starting at least with what we have as the beginning of this, of this plan. On that note, I'll ask our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, she has anything else that you would like to add?
Again, I'd just like to add that, moving forward, we will look closely at what programs can be offered at the high school level. But I don't want to lose sight of the fact, I think our five-year strategic plan that we have, which is built... that we have, which is building and making things move, I think under pillar one, when we're talking about excellence in education and learning, um, I think from that particular pillar, this whole STEM program moving forward in the district, this is awful. Um, sorry, uh, is, is credible. But I don't wanna lose sight of the fact of the STEM academy, uh, that was a dream five, six years ago, uh, as we talked about it, and I'm thrilled to hear, uh, what Mr. Dakota announced to us tonight, that, that they were overpopulated, which, it was a great night, the night that we all went to see the kids involved. Um, that's a marketable thing for the Lowell Public Schools moving forward, and I think that that's something that we should consider a, a plus, and it will eventually get, um, all the way to the high school. So, thank you.
Any discussion? Chair would entertain a motion accepted as a report of progress by Mr. Hoyt, second by Mr. Ma- by Ms. Martin. All in favor, all opposed, so voted. School materials for FY 2016, 2017, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is a report, reporting on school materials as, uh, as a, in response to a motion made by the mayor, request a report on which principals have ordered all of their materials for 2016, '17 school year, and, uh, other schools that have not done so. Um, I have asked, uh, curriculum office and, uh, Mrs. Abrams to, to follow up and, and not only in writing, but also follow up phone calls, talking to the principals, and make sure they, they have ordered and they will, so that they can be ready for the, uh, beginning of the year. Um, and I'm gonna ask Mrs. Abrams to have, if she has any other details.
So, um, so I did do, I did three final calls, if you will. Uh, I checked out with principals three different times to, and asked to make sure that they had the needed, uh, core instructional materials that are provided by the Curriculum Instruction Assessment Office. Uh, and then last Friday, I did a final last call, um, talking to principals, and actually I did one today. Uh, so, in terms of the core materials we're talking about for literacy, mathematics, science, and social studies, I did give you a little list on the second page. Uh, those are the materials that the district is, uh, truly responsible for. I did get, as I explained in this report, uh, a little wish list from some of the schools, too, but some of those items will need to be purchased out of their own school supply body, uh, budget. Um, but we will provide what we need to provide at our level from the district level. Um, uh, oh, one, uh, so one other thing I just wanted to mention here was the, um, as you know from the budget, the supply line is $480,000. We opened up six new classrooms, uh, going forward next year. That takes a big bite out of that budget. So, um, that's taken a lot of the money. And then any of the materials we need for mathematics, literacy, or science would take the rest of that. So, I'm just, um, the money's going to good use, but I just wanted to alert you to that as well. Thank you.
Any, any discussion? Ms. Martin?
If I could just ask, just because, and sadly, it's 'cause you brought it up, but, um, do you have a sense of what that number is in addition to the transfer funds that we allocated towards those new classrooms, what that total would be? I don't know if anyone could...
For, for the materials for those classes?
How that, yeah, so the, the materials that are going into it, I know that we talked about some of the other expenses that are going into it, just kind of a, is there a way to combine that?
Yeah, well, I, I can tell you, because we already have those budgets set up, ready to roll. So, it's, um, for the, uh, STEM academy, it's about $150,000 in materials, and then for the Wang School, it's about another $50,000, just to ensure that they have what they need for the public classes as well. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Can I just ask, do you know how many principals there are that have not ordered their materials yet?
At this point, there is not one principal that I've not communicated with or, um, had email conversations with. I've touched all of them. I said to please get back to me and let me know. They've called me, they've said, okay, we're all set. So, I can tell you that specifically, that's what's happened.
So, do you mean that every principal has ordered what they need? There's nobody that's outstanding?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, the chair would entertain a motion accepted as a report of progress. By Mr. Dakota, second by, by Ms. Doherty. Discussion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. The next item is, uh, by the superintendent, is non-discrimination of base, on the basis of gender identity policy.
Thank you, Mrs. Superintendent, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm gonna ask Assistant Superintendent Durkin to present this, uh, policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, uh, back in 2012, uh, the state of Massachusetts passed legislation, uh, regarding, uh, the non-discrimination of, um, on the basis of gender identity. Uh, since that time, the Mass, uh, Department of Education has, um, developed guidelines for schools to utilize, and, um, it's with those guidelines, um, in consideration that we modeled, uh, the, the policy for your consideration this evening. Um, and we also, um, spent some time reviewing the very recent document that came out from, um, the U.S. Department of Education Office of Civil Rights and the Department of Justice guidelines, uh, published on May 13th, uh, 2016. Through this process, this has been, um, pretty much a year-long process of reviewing, um, the, the guidelines that have come forward to us, developing a draft policy, having a team, uh, district team assigned to, uh, work on this, participated in Mass Department of Ed, um, trainings, and, uh, consulted with the Mass, uh, DESE, uh, relative to our, our proposed policy and guidelines. Um, so, uh, we, we had many feedback sessions with our, uh, school leaders, our social workers, and, uh, there'll be plans for training for staff. But, um, as staff attorney, um, Michael Ortiz is here, and he can walk you through the specifics of it if, if you so wish. We also, um, attach the, the actual legislation and, um, the DESE's, um, recommendation, so that you can see that our guideline, at our policy, does, um, adhere to the guidelines set forth by the state.
Any discussion? Ms. Doherty?
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, in terms of, I noticed that throughout the report, the language that the schools will consult with the student and parents or guardians, um, if involved. So, I'm wondering if there's any, um, discretion in terms of the age of the student? I would think that, you know, an elementary student, it's not a requirement that their parents or guardians be involved, and does that vary by age, where it said, you know, if involved, about the parents or guardians?
Good evening, everyone. Um, the answer to that, it's a case-by-case basis, because in some circumstances, when you look through the guidelines, DESI's really concerned about the safety of students, and there's an acknowledgement that some parents may not always be open to their child's gender choice. Uh, there's also a concern, um, as to, that there has to be a discussion and process around this, and sometimes kids will, will, will present and identify with a particular gender within the school that, and the parents aren't aware of that. So, it's really setting up a process, because when you look at the DESI guidelines, they don't define an age. They don't say six, they don't say seven, they don't say nine. It's really gonna depend on the circumstances, where the student is. So, when you look at our guideline, the, the policy and the guidelines that we're developing, it's really gonna look at, looking at the child from a holistic point of view, based on all the data we have, whether it be from councils, whether it be from staff, whether it be from hospitals discharged, all those circumstances, and looking at that and then figuring out where we go and how we address this, because there's no set age for this. Uh, when you look at some of the cases that OCR cited in the Department of Justice guidelines that they put out, the age range for some kids could be five, other kids could be 16, and what we really need to do is focus on what's best for the student from a safety point of view, and then figure out how we bring those parents into these discussions when it's safe for these kids. So, I wish I could give you a straight, easy answer, but there isn't one. This is a process that we're all learning to, learning new language around, that we're gonna be doing trainings on, and we'll be going forward together.
Go ahead.
So, additionally, um, to your question, Ms. Doherty, uh, there is, um, some of our guidelines that are not the full document, um, here. You have the policy for your consideration, but we've been working very closely with our staff around the guidelines, and those will be ready for the start of the school year. But one of the pieces of the guidelines is a notification plan, so that, um, you set forward with the child, um, if the child isn't ready to share this information with the parent, you set forward a plan for how that, the child will, um, eventually notify the parent. And we have been working with our staff on a case-by-case basis at this point, and we feel it's imperative that, that we provide all of our, uh, district leaders, uh, school-based leaders, and our staff with, um, a consistent policy that they, um, can utilize and, uh, reach out to our staff, uh, whenever, whenever they have a situation where, um, they, they're struggling and they need some, some help. Um, our goal and, um, the end is to provide a safe and supportive environment for all of our students.
Any further discussion? The chair would entertain a motion to, to, uh, approve the policy and accept the report as a report of progress by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Hoyt. Any further discussion, roll call.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Hoyt?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
The next item is a list of eligible teachers. Uh, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the customary list of eligible teachers that we present to you at the end of the year, presented by the HR department.
Chair would entertain a motion accepted as a report of progress by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Hoyt. Discussion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. The next is the personnel report. Mr. Superintendent?
Again, this is the, uh, customary item of the, uh, personnel report, presenting to you the, all the retirements and resignations that we have received to date.
Chair would entertain a motion accepted as a report of progress by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Gignac. Discussion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. Under new business, we have the, uh, charter school resolution, which was voted unanimously by this committee last week. Um, and I think that the resolution has been prepared, and so, uh, do we have a motion to approve the resolution? By Ms. Martin, seconded by, seconded by Mr. Hoyt. Discussion, roll call.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Hoyt?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
And I would just add that the school committee has voted, I mean, this, the city council voted to adopt a similar resolution, and that was unanimous as well. Um, the next item is the food service equipment replacement. Under new business, Mr. Superintendent?
I'm going to ask the, uh, school administrator, a business administrator to present. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Sharon Legasi, Food Service Director for Airmark, has recommended replacing a million dollars approximately of kitchen equipment that is past its useful life. Mike Vaughn, City Purchasing Manager, recommend, recommended that we order directly from the vendor with a state contract pricing, uh, because it was the lower than he estimated a lower bid, bidder would quote. Uh, purchase orders have been issued, and equipment will be delivered in the summer. Food service equipment would be paid from the Food Service Revolving Fund. It is estimated, after deducting the equipment, the fund would be, uh, estimated at $2.1 million. As a point of, uh, for your information, wanted to, uh, show the good work that, uh, the Food Service Director of Food Service Program, uh, has, has accomplished throughout this year, building the budget, building the reserves in the fund, and then being able to replace, uh, some equipment that has been, frankly, 20 years, uh, outdated. So, uh, we're moving forward, improving, reinvesting in the food service program, and I'm happy to report this.
Okay, chair would entertain a motion to approve the replacement of the food service equipment. Uh, we have a motion of that effect by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Hoyt. Discussion on the motion, roll call.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Hoyt?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
Next item on the financial statements under new business. Um, Mr. Superintendent?
Again, I'm gonna ask Mr. Frisch to present the, uh, financial statement.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Superintendent. It's my pleasure to present the, uh, budget report of, for 2015-16, year-to-date expenditures through May 31st. Um, I'll just briefly review the report. Um, at the previous committee meeting, Mr. Gendron requested the report be, uh, presented eight and a half by 11 as opposed to landscape, so we've accomplished that. Uh, the print is a little smaller, but, uh, we've been able to fit all the columns within the, um, portrait, uh, perspective. Um, going from left to right, uh, we start with the function, which is a, a department or a cost center, if you will. The object is the type of expenditure. Account description describes the, uh, object, and then we have the revised budget for 2015-16, year-to-date expenditures through May 31st, and then pending, the pending column is what purchase orders have been issued and not been, um, received yet. So, that's deducted from the available budget, and what's left is, uh, the budget minus expenditures, year-to-date expenditures minus outstanding purchase orders, gives you the available budget. And then the last column, percentage used of the, uh, total, uh, budget. So, uh, for example, on page two, I just wanna highlight one example. If you turn to page two, you, you look below function 2200, which is, uh, 2300 is teaching and learning, but if you go to object 512903, you can't miss it, because it's the largest number on the page. It represents, uh, teaching, uh, teacher salaries. Seventy-two million point three, I'm sorry, 72.2 million, expended year-to-date 53.6, uh, available is $18.6 million. So, we'll be spending, um, we'll be spending that down as we, uh, make the final, uh, payrolls for these, uh, the teachers this, uh, this next week. Uh, that concludes, uh, my report, and, uh, entertain any questions from the school committee.
Ms. Martin?
Just in that same area, uh, Mr. Frisch, so looking at the, a little higher up, 511000, the SW, I'm not sure what that stands for, is that social worker salaries?
Uh, I believe that's school-wide.
Okay. I'm just curious why that one hasn't been spent at all.
I, I can look into that. Um, I, off the top of my head, I, I don't have an answer for you, but I'd be happy to research that.
And I know that, I, I noticed that a number of these that we had discussed during the budget deliberation still are a little, are either completely underspent or just don't seem to be, you know, at the kind of 90% level where everything should kind of be at at this point. And I know we discussed that there'd be a lot of updating that would be happening. Um, when would we anticipate having that kind of completed? Is it 30 days after the end of the fiscal year, 60 days?
The expenditures will be, good question, by the way. You have until, um, uh, July 15th for the expenditures.
Okay.
And the purchase orders have until, we, we can issue up to June 30th, and then 60 days thereafter.
Okay.
So, even some of the, there'll be available budget, uh, you'll, you'll see available budget still remaining, but, uh, we have 60 days after June 30th to, uh, um, pay for invoices after the purchase order has been issued.
But we are taking into account that there are areas that we recognize that, 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 exactly, that just need to get cleaned up, that they've been charged incorrectly, that they need to get shifted around before we're just spending down whatever may be in that avail- in that available budget column, where recognizing that we, that there are areas that we've already expended but just haven't been accounted for.
Yes, yes. We definitely, there's a lot of activity in this, this upcoming several weeks and through July 15th. Be a very busy time and you'll see an updated report I'll provide to the School Committee. Thank you.
Mr. Gignac?
I'm sure, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, Mr. Frisch, I know this might go against what Mr. Gendron had asked you, but I like having the additional column that says budget and then revised budget and the transfers. That way we can just track the transfers and I, that might be something that, you know, we can just do at Finance Subcommittee level, but I think it makes more sense to be able to track the transfers. But thank you for putting this together.
Yeah. I will try to, I'll try to be creative and try to fit those two additional columns in for you.
I would say I, this format is so much, I like it so much better. So, you know.
Okay.
Whatever, whatever you want to use it, your Finance Subcommittee.
You guys can fight it out and just tell me what you want.
Any fur, any further discussion? Chair would entertain a motion to, as a report of progress. We have that motion? No, we don't. By Mr. Gignac, seconded by Ms. Martin. Discussion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted. The next item is a vote to accept a 1,000 donation from the District Attorney's Office. Do we have a motion to accept? Motion by Mr. DiCotto to accept, seconded by Ms. Martin. Is there a poster to, to show?
I just want to share that the second one is also a donation from the Lowell Police Department and I'm grateful for their collaboration. We are going to initiate a citywide campaign, but the first step in that is through the IT's Department and our Attendance Department. All schools with this donation will have posters that will be out. Claire, can you help me? So it's be in school, be on track. And so the logo that you see here will eventually be in storefronts and there'll be incentives for children who bring in a report card that shows their attendance and we're really excited about that. So we're grateful for the, the initial donation to get us going.
Okay, so if there's no objection, we'll also add to the motion, $1,000 from the Lowell Police Department. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DiCotto?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron? Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Houghey?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
Next, under Professional Personnel, we have the members of the United Teachers of Lowell hereby requested donate 23 sick leave days to Kristen Cologne, a Lowell High School teacher. Motion approved by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Houghey. Discussion, roll call.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. DiCotto?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes. Oh, sorry.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
And Mr. Houghey?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, one pretended, approved.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I would at this time, with the indulgence of my colleagues, like to ask for a suspension of the rules so that we could all have an opportunity to show our appreciation to our soon-retiring Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. I believe we have a presentation.
If there's no-
I, if there are no objections.
If there's no objection, we'll suspend the rules by general consent in order to do the presentation. Go ahead.
It's all in the numbers for Assistant Superintendent Claire Abrams. For more than 30 years, Claire has helped thousands of students tackle math problems and involve them in activities that allow them to discover how math relates to their everyday lives. And at the same time, she has worked to involve parents in their children's education, recognizing the synergy that comes from this family involvement. In all of her various roles, she has consistently brought her knowledge and enthusiasm for learning to students, their parents and their teachers. Claire began her career teaching math and science at the Robinson, Mc Avenue and Wang Schools. While at the Wang School, she developed their math lab program and served on the mathematics textbook selection committee for the entire district.
This is the first night that we've attempted to have a math-science family night. We have a lot of activities for everyone to do and right now it looks like we have a great crowd. We just thought it was a way to bring more parents into our PTO too, to get parents more actively involved in the school and what goes on. I can talk to you about the math activities. We have a tic-tac-toe four-in-a-row game where the kids have to really work on their multiplication tables. We have some curve-stitching activities where the kids have to make equilateral triangles and then make some designs from those. We have work with Cuisinier rods where the kids work on area and how to find different areas of different shapes.
In recognition of her skills, she was appointed to the position of kindergarten through grade 12 Coordinator for Mathematics in 2001, where she served successfully for 10 years. And since 2011, Claire has brought her expertise to bear on moving the school district forward in all subject areas, serving as the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, Instruction and Assessment.
A lot has been done over the course of the year in every subject area. You know, to highlight a few, the writing component, the writing workshop. That's really been a expanded program at our elementary level and it's really paying off. I actually went to the Green Hill School the other day and was listening to first graders read their stories to me and I was amazed. So it's really a wonderful thing that's been happening. In terms of mathematics, again, grade one, we did a training in first steps mathematics. That's one of our highlights for the year, which is the program that we put in that really is a diagnostic math program so that our teachers are becoming diagnosticians now so that they can look at, you know, different challenges or misconceptions that students have and able to identify those. Also spent a lot of time on unpacking the standards for mathematical practice this year. That was a big bulk of the work that was done. Elementary report card, updated, standard-based, correlated to Common Core, just another one. I think in mathematics also the middle school mathematics tournament that we had this year for the first time, which I still won't get over on a beautiful Sunday afternoon at 1:30, the auditorium filled with students working on math problems. It was really great. It was a wonderful, it was a wonderful day. And we brought back the creation of an algebra vertical team, working with seventh, eighth and ninth grade teachers on that one, which is really important to do.
Her rapport with teachers and the ability to bring everyone together to achieve the highest of learning goals has been a hallmark of her service to the Lowell Public Schools. So please, take the time now to recognize Claire for her years of effort and the consistent standards of excellence she has delivered for Lowell students.
I know it's late. Can I say two things? This has been a privilege. My entire journey in Lowell Public Schools, three in St. Margaret's, but a total of 41 years, I've enjoyed every minute of it. I think the fact that I still see students that call me Mrs. Abrams dates me, but it shows a respect that, that I've always had for my students and that they, I think, have had for me. I want to thank all of you. It's been a pleasure. I know some of you are new to this. I've enjoyed our time together and some of us have been here for a long time together and I've enjoyed that too. But I think I, it's privileged to be part of the most important job that anyone can have and I've hoped I made a little difference and I just wish everyone the best success. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I know it's late, but we do all have to take our time right now. I just want to say again, thank you for just an amazing number of years of service here in the city of Lowell, to a city that I know you have the utmost commitment to and compassion for. And I think that it's shown in your, your job performance from the very, very beginning. I've had great fortune to work with some remarkable curriculum experts in the time I've been here. I have learned an amazing amount. I, I number you right there at the top. You have taught me an amazing amount and, and thank God have made me better at this job than I deserve to be because I've had that, the benefit of that expertise. I will just say you can do it, you can do this job in a lot of different ways and I think you've always chosen to do it with a, with an appreciation for humor, which is something I appreciate and a real joy for the work it shows and has always shown from you. So thank you very much for all you've done for the, the students here in the city of Lowell, for their parents, for their families and for our community as a, as a whole. After 30 years, there's no doubt that the, that you've had a profound impact and we thank you for it.
Ms. Doherty?
I'd just like to share one thing. Claire and I first got to know each other when I was an outspoken parent, trying to, you know, do more, do it better, do it quicker. And I have to say, from the beginning, it was calm, measured openness to hear my concerns and really intelligent response and, and helping me to see there is a path, we're on that path. And I'll never forget, after we instituted that, the new math curriculum, changing math so that every third grader across the district was learning the same standard. That was huge and I think that was before I got on the committee. But that first year after that huge change across the district, and you know, people don't always respond easily to change. Parents didn't understand it, teachers were frustrated, you know, the whole bit, right? But that first year that we saw the MCAS scores soar, and I don't know where we were at some community events and just the, the sheer joy and excitement that I knew you felt. These children, all these children, were your children. And that kind of commitment, you can't ask for less than that. You, I mean, you, it's just amazing and that you've done that and you've been there and you have made, as my colleague said, a profound difference. So thank you.
Mr. Gignac?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Claire, for your years of service and keeping me entertained in our conversations. And you really have made a tremendous impact on the lives of hundreds of thousands of students at this point. And it's interesting to watch that video because, you know, your career here in Lowell was, I was going through up through the system. And it's, it's pretty impressive and now, and now we'll hopefully take you out for a drink after this. But really, and I remember after serving my first term on my last meeting, I jokingly said that you have one of the most boring jobs in the district. But I, but I said that by stating, you know, you have one of the most important and you did a tremendous job and I never, honestly, I'd never recall questioning your opinion or anything that you brought forward because you've, you've been a tremendous leader and, you know, your, your heart and your soul is in it for the kids and, and we really, really appreciate you. You will be missed. So thank you, Claire.
Mr. DiCotto?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Claire, speaking as an educator to another educator, we enter our profession with the highest of standards for ourselves and we try to look out for our kids and that, that's obviously what you have done for those, that many years. We just leave that as a num, a vague number. We don't have to keep living on that. But it, it is a rewarding career for things that people have no idea the rewards that we get as educators in the long distance. And you can bump into a kid who, "Hi, Mrs. Abrams. I remember you in my class. I had you," you know, and, and those are those little, those days that you'd go home and you'd feel really good about yourself. And you probably will have a lot of those days, Claire. Congratulations.
Mr. Houghey?
Real quick, I just want to congratulate you. Enjoy your retirement. I'm not sure if you're the oldest one in your family, but I'm the oldest. I'm the, I'm the oldest in my family, but I sure know you're a great leader for your siblings too. You're, you're leaving behind some great people that are still working here for us. So thank you very much.
Claire, you know, we've only worked together for a few months. I just would like to congratulate you on your career, but mostly I'd like to wish you a long and healthy retirement and hopefully it will be one that will be filled with a lot of new adventures for you as you go forward. So best of luck and congratulations.
And with that, the Chair would entertain a motion to move into executive session and adjourn from executive session. We have a motion of that effect by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Houghey. Roll call.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mr. DiCotto?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron? Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Houghey?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.